Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise? I'm going to ask Will Newberry and Christina Byrne of Seniors at Greenwich High School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our June 8 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any suggested changes to the proposed minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the proposed minutes stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Once again, our tradition at our September meeting is to introduce the participants at the Boys and Girls State Convention that was held in June and early July. And to do the honors here tonight, I will call upon Irv Porter of District 6, who is accompanied by our state representative, Libby Florin. And I will say, those two individuals, as well as a committee that they put together, do a fabulous job in recruiting and preparing the young men and women who are here tonight. Irv Porter.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to introduce the Boys and Girls State delegation from Greenwich. And this year is no exception because, once again, this delegation did our town, did their schools, and did themselves proud. For those that don't know about Boys and Girls State, is there anybody here that is a Boys and Girls State-er? If so, I'd like to have you stand, please. Boys and Girls State started in 1934. Go back to 1934. If you served during World War I, in 1934, you were in your mid-30s, early 40s, raising a family. And you came to understand that the political process was something that you needed to know more about. And the American Legion and American Legion Auxiliary started the Boys and Girls State programs at that time. The thrust of the program was to learn by doing, to learn about the two-party system and about democracy by practicing it. And Boys and Girls State is held all over the United States, on a campus in each state, every year, and has been since 1934. As a result of Boys and Girls State, outstanding leaders are chosen to go to Boys and Girls Nation, which is held in Washington, DC. And kind of the parallel of Boys and Girls State is that, going through the process, there's a complete slate of officials that are elected. The two-party system is put in place. And at the federal level, they elect a president and a vice president. Just like at the state level, they elect governors, lieutenant governors, et cetera. Greenwich is unique in that we go to the housemasters at Greenwich High School and to their peers at Brunswick and other schools, and basically ask them, for the young people that are juniors in high school, that are outstanding leaders, citizens, give to the community, are good students, they don't have to be five-on-a-four-point-system students, but good students. And most importantly, have shown an interest in the political process, and they're impact players. Positively, they're impact players. We take the nominations that we get from the schools, put them through a competitive process, weigh each of those criterias equally, and the tiebreaker is the interview. The bottom line is that, over the years since 1977, we've been blessed to have numerous governors, some that came in second. Will Newberry will tell you what it's like to lose the governorship by three votes, which he did this year. Sam Taylor can tell you what it was like to lose as governor by five votes. So they know that every vote counts. And through the whole process, they come to better understand what the democratic process is about. And the bottom line is that they're chosen to be juniors, or those that go are juniors, for the simple reason they can come back at the high school level and apply what they learned in their senior year, both in their school, as well as in the community. So I'd just like to identify those that were able to come tonight. And we have two awards that were not given at Girls State, and will embarrass two girls who received those awards. But this year's Boys State delegates were Jack Applebaum, Dave Blumenthal, Victor Siriow, David Finkelstein, William Newberry, and Jack Zimmerman.[354.62][354.62][applause] And the Girls State delegates were Christina Byrne, Kate Centrofante, Jacqueline Kalen, Yael Nizenweig, and Jessica Strasser.[371.12][371.12][applause] I mentioned that each state selects two boys and two girls to go to Boys and Girls State, or Girls Nation. This year, William Newberry, who ran for governor on behalf of his party, lost by three votes, but he was one of the two Connecticut representatives that represented the entire state. Congratulations, Will.[398.53][398.53][applause] In addition, Greenwich was honored by the accomplishments of David Blumenthal, who received the Francis Burke Reddick Award for his achievement in parliamentary procedure. David Finkelstein received the Harry Bartlett Award, which goes to the boy who, by his interest and activity, made an outstanding contribution to the program of the Senate. And Jack Applebaum, who received the Mary Alice Cameron Award for his political activity. And most importantly, Jack, particularly in the environment that we're in and in front of this body, for the political activity which adhered to the highest principles and ideals. All of these awards were given to the boys at the final Boys State award ceremony. Congratulations to the guys.[449.12][449.12][applause] The Girls State delegation also did us proud. Yael Nizenweig was given the Helen Schaefer Award for her yeoman contributions. And Kate Centrofante, the Joan Connolly Memorial Award, given to the most outstanding girl at Connecticut Girls State. We chose this venue tonight to present those awards to Yael and Kate, and asked the RTM to show their appreciation, not only to you, but to all of you and the entire -- [applause] We're blessed to have young people like this in our community, and it really is rewarding to Libby and I to have participated in this for as many years as we have. And if you wonder why, as old dude, in my case, and not-so-old Dudus, in Libby's case, why we're still involved. I went in 1952 to Boys State, so I'm just giving back. And Libby was lieutenant governor in New York State, and she's just giving back, just like all of you are.
Congratulations to all our young men and women, and thank you, Irv and Libby, for a wonderful job. All right. Welcome to the September meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM moderator. We have a special guest tonight who would like to address us, and at this point, I'd like to call on Dr. Sidney Freund, our new superintendent of schools. Dr. Freund.
Good evening, and thank you for permitting me to speak a few minutes this evening. What a great introduction and meeting some of our students, and we have so much to be thankful for and proud of in Greenwich. I started at the beginning of July, and I've gone through, I guess one could say it's a full immersion, out most nights and meeting different groups and organizations and people. And what continues to impress me, and certainly this is a great example of it, is the number of people within the community who give of their time to community. And in terms of the representative work that you do here, and all of the charitable work that occurs in support of schools, terrific role models for our children in terms of what it means to be part of a community and to give of oneself. So I thank you for that and the jobs that you do. I'm going to be very, very brief in my comments, respectful of your time. I know you have a long agenda, and I know that in the not-too-distant future, I'll be standing here again and speaking before you on behalf of our schools, and answering questions and hard questions, I'm sure as they should be, related to the budget for the coming school year. So I want to thank you for the hard work that you do for our community and the support of our schools, and I look forward to getting to know more of you and working with you, seeing you at community and school events. Thank you very much.
And it is my sad duty to recognize Betty Link for what is likely to be her last appearance before us. Betty Link, the fleet director of the town of Greenwich.[655.54][655.54][applause]
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM and guests. I ask for this opportunity to come before you, to thank you for the support you've given me in the nineteen-and-a-half years that I have been with the town. My first introduction to the RTM was the Transportation Committee. I went before them, and then several other committees, and this full body. You supported me in things like vehicle replacement programs. We came a long way from when we used to line up the vehicles and kick tires. Outsourcing the parts room, when I expressed on you how important it was that we used our resources and maximized as much as possible and outsourced that function, has been very successful. We're in our 10th year. Our new automated fueling and fleet maintenance programs, how I've explained through the years how we get all the data and information that we're asked for so often to present to you. ASC certification, Blue Seal program, this was where my men became ASC certified, and we got the Blue Seal from the association. And of course, the formation of the fleet department, making fleet a chartered department. We are now number 14 in the top 100 best fleets of all of North America. And we're --[733.12][733.12][applause] Thank you. And we're recently the hybrid vehicle program. We now have 12 hybrids in the fleet. And we are soon to be opening the truck washing facility. I'm hoping to see that first truck roll by before I leave next week. I talked to the contractor this morning, he says the brushes are going in tomorrow, so we're making progress. And I'd like to close with thanking you for knowing the difference between running a garage and operating a professional fleet department and supporting me in those efforts.
Thank you, and we wish you all the best. Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. At your June 8, 2009 meeting, you adopted the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development: Visions and Policies. This is the town of Greenwich's 10-year plan. Recommended in this plan is the creation of a Plan Implementation Committee, to be formed within 90 days of the adoption and approval of the Plan of Conservation and Development by the RTM. The PIC will be chaired by me, the first selectman, and include representatives from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Estimation and Taxation, the RTM, town departments, boards, and others deemed appropriate. Citizen participation for this committee and the others called for in this document was solicited through our print media and radio, as well as during public events and meetings that I attended since the June 8 adoption. I received well over 50 names of people, several from the RTM, who have an interest in subject areas, calling for further study and action in this plan. I formed a small working group consisting of the town planner, Diane Fox, P&amp;Z chairman, Don Heller, town administrator, John Crary, town council, John Wetmore, who specializes in advising the land use agencies, RTM Appointments Committee Vice Chair, Joe Pellegrino, and the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee Chair, Leslie Lee, to assist me in reviewing prospective participants for service on the PIC and the other committees called for in the plan. Tonight, I am here to announce to you, the members of the RTM, who the members of the Plan Implementation Committee will be, and it will be convened in the next several weeks. Its purpose is to prioritize the action items in the Implementation Action Plan and assign the responsibilities to the appropriate agencies, creating a timetable for completion. This committee will also be involved in the development of priorities for projects to be considered for inclusion in the town 15-year capital plan. The Plan Implementation Committee could use implementation schedules to guide ongoing implementation and assessment of specific elements of the plan. The PIC will meet at a minimum of four times per year to establish priorities and guide implementation of the plan's recommendations. In addition, the committee will assess the status of specific recommendations, possibly establish new priorities, and suggest new implementation techniques. What I have just described to you is not novel. It is what was described in the plan that you adopted on June 8. There will be 11 voting members of this advisory committee and four non-voting professional staff members. The membership will consist of myself, again as chairman, Don Heller, chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Fred Brooks, Planning and Zoning Commission member, Jim Campbell, BET member, Larry Simon, BET member, Jill Oberlander, RTM District 2, Louisa Stone, RTM District 10, Christopher Von Keiserling, RTM District 8, Bill Boyson, town resident, Greg Bedrosian, town resident, and Mary Ellen Labine, town resident. John Crary, Diane Fox, Amy Seabert, and John Wetmore will also advise this committee throughout its deliberations and meetings. It will not be, it will certainly be open to other town departments as the need necessitates their participating for assistance. This committee, again, will convene very shortly to begin laying out its work. This is an inaugural committee. This has not been done before. This is brand-new, to the town's planning process, and one that I think makes terrific sense. The establishment of the remaining committees called for in the plan will be unveiled over the next several weeks, and I look forward to meeting with my working group to comprise those committees and present them to you, ideally at your October meeting. Thank you for your time this evening, and have a good meeting. Thanks.
Thank you.[1042.14][1042.14][applause] Have I forgotten anyone else to recognize? Okay. I do want to remind all those who are running in the November election for the RTM. Let me first thank the efforts of all of our members, particularly our district chairs, who made a special effort to recruit candidates. Congratulations. I think you did a wonderful job. As you saw in the paper, you might have seen, we have 221 candidates. So thank you for those efforts. And in that regard, hopefully, all of you who are running receive from the clerk's office the memo on filing a registration form. And I note, paragraph 2 in that memo says, "The town clerk is required to assess a late filing fee of $100 against individuals for failure to file within 10 days." I just asked our town clerk if she was really going to assess that, and when she shook her head yes, there was no hint of a smile. So I would get this in as quickly as possible. Many of you already have. It is being accepted tonight, and it's very easy to fill out, but don't neglect that, please. Okay. That now brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. I notified our district and committee chairs that, based on the reports I received, I intended to place six items on the consent calendar, two items on our combined calendar, primarily because there were some typos or omissions in the resolution. And I know many of our members would prefer to see such items, if there's no controversy, go on the consent calendar, but our practice is not to do that when we have substitute resolutions. So the message, really, to all our department personnel is, please be careful when submitting call items. Try and minimize the chance that we'll have to consider a substitute resolution and thereby put what could be a consent item on our combined calendar. And that would leave the remaining items to be considered separately. So I'll summarize it, then I'll go back and describe the consent items that I am designating tonight. Items on the consent calendar, I will put items 1, 2, 3, and 5, 6, 7. Items 4 and 8 will be combined for voting purposes, or that will be my recommendation. And that would leave items 9 through 22 to be considered separately. Now let me just alert you. Items 12 through 22 are the proposed rule changes brought to us by the special committee. And I informed the members of Legislative and Rules Committee on Monday night, and in my notification to district and chairs about tonight's call, that we would treat those proposed rule changes as if we already had adopted the first reading requirement, that is, one of those proposals. Meaning, we would not take a final vote on the merits of items 12 through 22. And procedurally, the best way to do that, I believe, is, when those items come up, to consider a motion to suspend the rules, to allow us to take them up one at a time. We will hear committee reports. We will have discussion on the items. We can consider and vote on motions to amend tonight. And that is to make productive use of the first reading opportunity. But we would not take a final vote. And based on whatever happens tonight, those items would come back to us, and they may be slightly changed to reflect what we did tonight. The special committee would put back on our call for October for final consideration. So that is my intention tonight. And procedurally, we'll just take care of that with a motion to suspend the rules, to allow us to dispose of it without taking a final vote. We don't want to postpone to the next meeting because procedurally, that brings it back in the exact same form, and we may not want to do that. All right. So at this time, I will designate the following six items for our consent calendar. And if those items remain on the calendar, the only thing that you will hear tonight is what I am about to say. We will have no committee reports and no discussion on those. We will proceed immediately to vote after I have finished identifying them. All right. Item number one is an appropriation of $40,000 for the account entitled Round Hill Road Bridge. Item number two is --
One more, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Buttell, please state your point of order.
I believe your motion to suspend the rules for that purpose --
Well, we haven't gotten there yet. I'm taking care of the consent calendar items first.
Right, but you made a motion to adopt for the calendar purposes, placing these items on the consent, placing certain items on the combined, keeping other items --
No, no, no. I made no motion. I was summarizing the outline, the organization for tonight's meeting.
Well, traditionally, Mr. Moderator, I believe you have a motion to suspend the rules for that purpose.
Mr. Buttell, we take care of the consent calendar items. Then I will suggest a motion to suspend the rules to combine two items. When we take care of those, we will consider the separate items. And when we get to the first of the special committee proposals, we will then take up a motion to suspend the rules. We'll do it in that order. All right. I have placed item number one on the consent calendar. Item number two is a resolution approving the amended building permit fee schedule. Item number three is the appropriation of $24,692 for an account regarding a marine sewage disposal facility, and further authorizing the first selectman to accept a grant of $18,519 from the state DEP regarding a marine sewage disposal system at Grass Island. Item number five is the appointment of Lisa Beinstock to the Nathaniel Witherell Building Committee. Now, I don't see a term. Are we missing a term in there?
There's no term for --
Oh, for the building committee. Correct. I was confusing that with the Board of Nathaniel Witherell. Thank you. So this is the appointment of Lisa Beinstock to be a member of the Nathaniel Witherell Building Committee. Item number six is the appointment of Joseph Rogers to be an alternate member of the Inland, Wetlands, and Watercourses One Word Agency for a term beginning April 1, 2009, and expiring March 31, 2013. And item seven is the appointment of Christine Chow to be a member of the Board of Social Services for a term beginning April 1, 2009, and expiring March 31, 2012. All right. Those six items have now been designated consent calendar items. Is there any objection to that designation? Mr. Clark.
One more, Mr. Moderator. Explain some more Beanstock.
Thank you. Beanstock. Any objections to the designation of those six items on our consent calendar? Hearing none, I ask Mr. Von Keiserling.
I have no particular objection to this, but I believe practice --
Thank you.
-- is a big certainty, if I might contradict you, unless you wish me to object.
Well, I'm calling for any objections.
I'm saying I object on practice because it has been the practice for a new person, a new point C, rather than a reappointment, to be in the combined items so the body and the public can hear the report on who they are and what they have done to recommend them to the shop. I'm not going to, for the view of the time tonight, I'm not going to object to it, but I hope we return to that practice. Thank you.
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Consent calendar items 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7. And proceed to poll your delegation. And I remind our districts and committees that I always preface my recommended organization of the call by saying, "Based on the reports received." I rely on those reports. I don't recall an Appointments Committee report on this, so I need you to alert me if that is the case. And that is what our practice has been, and that is what we do. But you must, you must report. While we are voting, we will continue with the business of the meeting. Next up will be the suggestion that we combine items 4 and 8 for voting purposes. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine items 4 and 8 for voting purposes? It has been moved and seconded to combine items 4 and 8 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of combining, of suspending the rules to combine items 4 and 8 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion has carried. So we will now take up item 4, followed by item 8, and when we are finished with that, that would leave to consider separately items 9 through 22, and we will deal with 12 through 22, as previously discussed. So Commissioner of Public Works, Seabert, with item number 4.
Yes, good evening. This is a substitute resolution to address a small correction in the resolution as it was written, because we're actually accepting waste receptacles, not cash. So the resolution is resolved that the town of Greenwich, except for placement on Greenwich Avenue, a gift from Greenwich Green &amp; Clean of 34 decorative waste receptacles, having a value of $25,562.09.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The substitute resolution on item 4 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Pamela Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee?
Failure abbreviated report. I guess we were expecting this to be on consent. This item is to approve the gift from the Greenwich Green &amp; Clean for waste receptacles to be placed along Greenwich Avenue. The item was presented to the committee on Monday, September 14, by Amy Seabert, Commissioner of Public Works. The current receptacles will be replaced with 34 new receptacles. The older pieces will be removed, rebuilt, and reused in other locations. The committee voted in favor, 10-0-0, with District 7 and 9 absent.
Thank you. Karen Sodicon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening. Amy Seabert was present to describe the gift to us. There was very little discussion. There was one question as to when they would be available and be put in place. The vote was 12-0-0. Upon reflection, I'm not even sure if this should have come to Parks and Rec. The receptacles are not going into any park area, they're going on Greenwich Avenue.
Discussion on item 4? Discussion on item four. Item eight now comes before us. Denise Savageo, our Conservation Director.
I have a substitute resolution for number eight. It is correct in your explanatory, but a couple of words were left off in the actual call. So the resolution should read as it is in your explanatory. Resolve that the Conservation Commission of the Town of Greenwich, and what was left out is the words "of" the Town of Greenwich, be hereby authorized to accept receipts from the Atlantic Center for the Environment in the amount of $500, and be these receipts to become appropriations in appropriate accounts upon approval by the Board of Estimate and Taxation.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on item eight has been moved and seconded. Peter Berg, Vice Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, fellow members, Mr. Moderator. We had two members of the Conservation Commission at the Land Use Committee meeting last Monday, Nancy Chapin and Sue Baker. They explained that the grant will be used to replace an existing counter at the Fishway located next to the Mayanus River Dam. It will not impact town expenses in any way. It only has benefits to the town. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item eight. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Combined items four and eight. And proceed to poll your delegation. That now brings us to the first of our separate items. Item number nine.
Moderator?
Mr. Tuthill.
I would like to make a motion to limit debate to three minutes per motion by each speaker.
Is that for item nine or for the balance of the evening?
For the balance of the evening.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to limit debate for the balance of the evening to three minutes per speaker. Period. Motion to limit debate is not debatable, but it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of limiting debate for the balance of the evening to three minutes? This was per speaker, per motion.
That's right, sir.
Yes. All those in favor of limiting debate for the balance of the evening to three minutes per speaker, per motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has carried.
Down.
Pardon me? Okay.
Requesting for a voting vote, please.
Let's take a rising vote and see if we agree on the results. And again, only RTM members may participate. I ask those in favor of the motion to limit debate to please rise. Those opposed, please rise. That motion has carried. All right. So all speakers, please remember that there is a three-minute limit now in effect. All right. Item nine now comes before us. Amy Seabert with, Commissioner of Public Works with that resolution.
Resolved that Chapter Nine of the Town Code refuse be amended as follows to waste and litter, the content as it appears in the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item nine has been moved and seconded. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, we took this matter up last Monday evening. Appearing before our committee was Assistant Town Attorney Gene McGlaughlin and Jim Campbell of the BET. It was explained to us that Article One of this ordinance has not been revised since the 1940s. The triggering event to the update was that the town now has a new contract with the Connecticut Resources Recovery Agency. This is a place where we send much of our waste materials, and there's no longer an obligation to pay them a minimum amount of money, which means that the Town of Greenwich is no longer intending to send as much waste disposal there as in the past. Attorney McGlaughlin explained further that several years ago, there was a charter change which put the Division of Waste Disposal under the DEPW and took it away from the Department of Health. That was also a change in these, in this article. Several of these revisions have been made so as to confirm what kinds of waste can be deposited at the town's transfer station and provides for fines for unlawful dumping. These fines are now going to be paid to the town as opposed to the state. There were also updates made to Article Two regarding disposition of litter. Our committee made four minor changes to correct some scrivener's errors. We took up the item as amended. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. David Melick, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the RTM, we met in, Public Works Committee met in Town Hall on Monday, the 14th. We discussed items, including this item number nine, in attendance to support the Edomart Norton of the Audit Committee of BET and Dave Thompson, Deputy Commissioner of Public Works. The history, some of the history was commented upon well by Representative Wells. Holly Hill is a bit of a living, breathing thing, as we all know. And in 1990, when the transfer took place, we kind of left the language back in 1990 and didn't make the necessary amendments. So, and actually, I think if, even if we had, we'd probably be making changes now anyway. A lot of them are just technical terms and so forth, but they're necessary for us to be able to begin to really get a better handle on, on the Holly Hill facility. There were grand plans a number of years ago, and I think we're going to end up taking some pauses and so forth and be able to transition the facility to an even better and more well-run operation. But we need the regulation in the first place, as I think people know that there were, there were some problems this spring in terms of further evidence of out-of-town dumping and so forth. And that correlates with other findings, such as from the Audit Committee. But the fact is, the enforced legislation restricts our ability to control and sufficiently enforce dumping at Holly Hill. And yes, we do dump at Holly Hill. While the rewrite of the regulation was primarily for the, those rules, we have to also remember that this regulation covers more than just Holly Hill. It covers some of our other corners of town, actually, all corners of town. So it's more than just for Holly Hill. We, I discussed the identified changes, the foreseeable impacts, and the desired results. The items appeared reasonable, and no suggestions or changes were made. Vote 9-0-1, Districts One and Ten absent. The abstention was from District Four, who arrived late at the polling for the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The, the four changes that are proposed to be made, the first one is on, in Section 9-1, the definition section, under the section Approved Vehicles, the third line down between the word spillage and the word approved, the word "and" should be inserted, so it needed leakage or spillage, "and" approved by the superintendent. On the fourth page, under Article 9.8, at the top, the sentence that begins, "The Commissioner shall have power," I should insert the word "the," so it shall have the power to revoke licenses. On that same page, at the bottom, 9-11.1, the penalty provision, third line, says 2,500. There should be a deletion of the hyphen between 2 and 1,000. And finally, on the, on the facing page, under Article Two, Litter, the definition of rubbish, the last two words and the parentheses should be deleted by deleting "except ashes" and the parentheses.
Thank you. That being a motion to amend offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Did everyone get those proposed changes? Do I need to repeat them? All right. Is there any, we can adopt motions to amend upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to those four changes? Louisa Stone?
Mr. Brenner, one other correction under definitions-
Oh. This was the spelling? No.
This is spelling error. I'll stop the gap.
All right. Why don't we, let's dispose of the Legislative and Rules Committee motion, and then I will raise the point you did alert me to. Any objection to the four changes described by Mr. Wells? All right. That motion to amend on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee is adopted upon unanimous Louisa Stone points out that the word naphtha, which is a liquid mixture of hydrocarbons, where does that appear?
Number seven. Definitions after this weight under, at a red seven.
Okay. So this is, these call pages are not paginated, but it appears on the second page of the proposed ordinance in our call. This is 9-1A7. And the spelling, there's an H missing. It should be naph, P-H-T-H-A. So we, any objection to that change? Hearing none. That amendment is adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you. Discussion on item nine. Mr. Edwards, District Eight.
Good evening. I would like to ask the Commissioner of Public Works if, under the section on literature where that involves leaves and grass clippings, because that's epidemic in town, and I don't know whether that's considered a violation of the present ordinance. It says, it says under litter, and it says, says you can't basically throw things into the street. But I don't know whether litter is just bulkier stuff, like cans and garbage-
Does this ordinance prohibit leaves being placed in the street? Is that the question?
Yeah, and grass clippings. Because the funniest thing in this town is to-
All right, thank you. We'll get that answer.
From one town to the next.
Commissioner, do you know the answer to that question? Does the ordinance prohibit it? Yes? The answer is yes.
Okay. Then the question is, who enforces that? And, and if a policeman is called, is that under their jurisdiction to then levy this fine? Or does the commissioner come out, as it says under solid waste, and then give a ticket? Or how do we file the complaint? Because this happens all throughout town.
Well, we are discussing this proposed ordinance.
Right. And I, then I, right. Then I'd like to make amendment, if that's the case, because this is not clear. You said it was involved leaves and, and grass. And I watch every neighborhood go blow this way, blow this way, and I just don't know what you want to-
Okay. So what is your, what is your proposed motion to amend?
Well, I'm still asking the commissioner whether that's-
First of all, all, all comments are made through the chair.
Okay. Directing it through you, the chair, to the commissioner, if that, if that covers those items. And if it does, then I will make an amendment.
Well, we have an answer. It does.
Okay. Then I propose amendment under the official, that the police be involved to basically enforce that. Because there's no enforcement for this.
I need, I need the wording of your motion to amend. Where in the ordinance are you suggesting we add language?
Under litter, Article Two, under section-
Wait a minute. Article Two.
Says sweeping, Article 915, sweeping litter into gutters prohibited.
Okay. Your proposed amendment is what?
Well, the question is, is who's responsible? I still want to ask the question, is who's responsible for enforcing this or, yeah, enforcing it? Yes.
Well, would you, would you care to respond to that question? Who enforces this ordinance? Why don't you come up to the microphone and everyone could then hear?
Yeah, because it's not in the litter, in the, in the ordinance-
All right, we'll get an answer to your question.
Of who is supposed to be, be responsible for enforcing the litter part.
Yes, we use a combination of both our staff and police if we need to enforce things underneath our waste ordinance. So we use both of us. And if you have particular concerns about someone in your neighborhood, I'm sure we can talk to you outside of that.
All right. This is not a personal conversation. We are addressing the body.
Thank you.
So we'll go one at a, excuse me, one at a time. Thank you. Now, you have a motion to amend?
Okay. I have another question that, through the chair to the commissioner.
I'm, I'm not accepting any other questions at this point. Do you have a motion to amend?
Yes. Okay. Under Section 915, that it would read, and again, it may not be in the right section, but that's what I was trying to ask, is this is just really confusing, is who enforces this?
Well, I, I think the, the procedure would have been to do this in committee.
Okay, good, good.
Did we bring this up to a committee?
Yes. Well, I brought it up to our district.
And did we have the resources available to answer your questions there?
Okay. Then the question, then I, then I ask that this be referred back to committee, because it's not clear who the enforcing agency is on this. This is a situation that happens throughout the town. It has caused aggravation between neighbors at times, and it's-
All right. So you have a motion now to refer this?
Yes, to refer it back to, to, to clarify who is the Legislative and Rules, yes.
All right. Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to refer item nine to our Legislative and Rules Committee. Discussion on that motion to refer.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes, thank you very much. The reason is, is this is a revision of an old, longstanding ordinance. It is not clear, when I read it, as to who is supposed to enforce this. These are nice rules, but then so what? Even on the first part with, you know, the commissioner being involved, but how do you get that precedent? And she says, "The police," but nowhere in here does it say that the police have any authority on this. So that's what I find confusing. And if this time is an opportunity to update this, then I just say, in prudence, is to say, what is the commissioner's responsibility? Do the police have any responsibility? Because it's not clear from what the commissioner said. And I do appreciate the good work she does.
Further discussion on the Edwards motion to refer. David Dutch in District Ten.
Reading the definitions of litter and rubbish in 912, it's not clear to me that leaves are included.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Dr. Carlson?
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I think it would be very well worthwhile to have this whole item taken up by the Legislative and Rules Committee for further clarification. I think you may have some further problems with this in areas where you have leaf collection in the autumn. The situation in District One is fairly horrendous when you're coming close to leaf collection. Sometimes leaf collection is very late. I remember I came to see members of the Board of Selectmen about a dozen years ago, and I had to ask Lolly Prince, who was then, not for a selectman, but a member of the board, to have leaf collection in my neighborhood very soon, because it was now after Christmas. People normally put leaves into the gutter or just above the gutter within a few days of leaf collection. And I think you've got some usage here that is fairly common throughout my entire district. And I imagine you have, would have usage in any district that you do have leaf collection. So I think the whole ordinance should be brought into the situation where it doesn't contradict what I would call useful, useful activities and purposeful actions by people of the town to actually clean the town in the autumn of leaves and, and so forth. Thank you.
Jim Butell, District Eight.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, Dr. Carlson covered a portion of what I said, so I won't repeat. Other than to say, with the leaf collections, a problem in District Eight as well, will get people pushing them into the street and on narrow streets. It can actually obstruct- It can actually obstruct traffic. In addition, we constantly find them being piled on top of storm drains, so that when we get rain, we're not getting the proper runoff. This is one that, I, I know it's annoying, but I think it's worth sending back to committee, not just to look at, at leaf collection relative to this ordinance, but the nuisance ordinance relative to this ordinance. Because there, there are other items. Let's only have to address this once, and not have to come back to it in a year. So I do support the motion to post, or to refer. Thank you.
Further discussion on the Edwards' motion to refer item nine to our Legislative and Rules Committee. I will call for a voice vote, this being a procedural issue. If you want to give this to Legislative and Rules to bring back when they have finished their work, you should vote in favor. If you want to continue taking this up, considering this tonight, you should vote no. All those in favor of the Edwards' motion to refer item nine to our Legislative and Rules Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has carried. Item ten now comes before us. John Crary, our Town Administrator.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, resolve that the representative town meeting hereby approves the sale of a 4,083 square foot portion of town-owned right-of-way adjacent to Holly Hill Lane at six forty-four West Putman Avenue to West, six forty-four West Putman Avenue Associates LLC for the sum of $300,000. And be it further resolved that the First Selectmen is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the town any contractual documents necessary to effectuate the sale of the above referenced property.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item ten has been moved and seconded. We will hear the committee reports on this item, beginning with Pamela Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, committee members, guests. This item was taken up, request for the sale of 4,083 square feet property on Holly Hill for approximately $300,000, was presented to the committee by John Crary, Town Administrator. This was a fairly controversial item, as the information presented was not very detailed. We were informed that Mr. Crary was not involved in the negotiation and sale, so was not fully informed. John Wetmore was the, was not available to attend the meeting, nor the meeting when this was taken up in June. The property was described as a fifty-foot right-of-way, which would allow the purchaser of this property to develop it such that the primary tenant, CVS, would be able to put in a drive-through pharmacy. The key issues and concerns discussed and considered by the committee related to valuation, alternative use, traffic congestion, and whether this had been considered to be structured as a lease. As to valuation, Mr. Crary could not provide details, as John Wetmore led this, led the appraisal process using Liberty Unlimited. They determined the fair market value to be three hundred, three thousand, three hundred ten dollars. We were told that, given the shape of the property, the possibility that there was only a single user, single buyer, that the price was considered reasonable, which Mr. Wetmore confirmed was the basis for valuation. Though initially told otherwise, we later learned that the town assessor, Ted Gwartney, was not involved at all in the valuation process, so could not substantiate whether the valuation was appropriate. We were told leasing was not considered. Based on subsequent information obtained, it appeared that the strip of land was valued at a rate below that of the full site, and members expressed concern that the last piece of property sold is, should, or often is valued higher. Given a number of follow-on discussions among and between RTM members trying to share information, particularly as will be reported by land use, the valuation process may have been limited as to comparables, which were not provided directly to the committee, but appear to have been not necessarily directly appropriate. We were also informed by Mr. Crary and Mr. Wetmore that as to alternative use, it was considered and none were found. In particular, the Commissioner of Public Works, we were told, was asked about the potential for use of the road, for widening, use of the land for widening the road, and were informed that none was contemplated in the future. We weren't quite sure what future meant. This seemed cursory, and no detail was provided, particularly given that traffic congestion has been occurring and increasing, given the increased density of Holly Hill area. We were also told that the CRA recycling trucks were partly the cause of congestion, and that consideration of a second scale was being made, as well as rerouting these trucks, and that that would cost approximately $25,000. But no commitment has been made for the use of the proceeds of the sale for this purpose. Questions regarding the difference in tax revenues were not answered at the meeting, but a committee member followed up with the assessor's office to gauge revenue impact, which appeared to be relatively small. The sale is to meet a specific need of CVS, which uses several alternative standard designs. If not approved, we were told that they will simply use another of their standard designs and exclude the drive-through option. This did not appear to be of great concern, although no one representing the buyers nor CVS were present to answer any specific questions. At least, and no one else expressed a concern that this would have a major impact on their lease of the space. The committee noted that by selling the land, should CVS close or move, there would be no other restrictions on the land use. Given the cursory responses concerning the alternative use, including not necessarily addressing road widening, it seemed premature to sell the land. Subject to obtaining full disclosure of details concerning the valuation process, alternative use and a potential leasing option, the committee was supportive during our initial discussions of a sale and voted nine-one-one, with, with the expectation that the information would be, would confirm what was discussed during the meeting. No details were forthcoming. We received fairly summary information, at least information that did, none that allayed any of our concerns. So many, I understand, in terms of those that I have spoken with, have noted that they would consider reversing their support, including my support of the item. And so our vote, while it was nine-one-one, given the follow-on information and much of the discussion that took place after our meeting, there was lukewarm support for the item. Thank you.
Mr. Berg with the report of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, again. We had Mr. Crary, the Town Administrator. We also had Donald Heller, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Crary showed, showed us a map of the property. He said the town was approached to sell the land for a drive-through CVS and other commercial uses. He said that a price of $300,000 was negotiated by John Wetmore based on an appraisal by Liberty Unlimited. He said that the town, that town departments were polled, and that there are no circumstances in which the town would need this property for governmental purposes. On questioning, Mr. Crary said he had not read the appraisal and could not respond to the many criticisms of it that members of the Land Use Committee had sent to him in advance. Among the critiques was the fact that one of the three comparables was in Stamford, one of the comparables was ten years old, and no adjustments were made for time. We asked Mr. Crary if two recent vacant commercial Greenwich land sales would have been better comparables than the Stamford comp and the ten-year-old comp. Mr. Crary said he had spoken to tax assessor, Mr. Gwartney, who said that those sales were not valid, one of them had been since developed with condominiums. We asked Mr. Crary if he asked Mr. Gwartney about the appraisal. Mr. Crary quoted Mr. Gwartney to say that $300,000 was a good price. Mr. Carter of District Six pointed out that the town's appraisal indicates a fair market value of 641,000, not three oh three, not 303,000, as stated in our Explanos. Mr. Crary repeated that he had not read the appraisal. When asked if he had been party to the negotiations, Mr. Crary said no. Mr. Wetmore had alone negotiated the deal. We asked Mr. Crary if he had asked Mr. Wetmore to attend the Land Use Committee meeting to answer our many questions about this item, including the appraisal. Mr. Crary said yes, but Mr. Wetmore was unavailable. Mr. Crary stated that CVS would build a smaller building if the town did not sell it the land. We asked Mr. Crary, does the proposed project conform with the new plan of conservation and development adopted by the RTM in June after two years of study and out-of-pocket cost of about $250,000, which says, and we quoted, must preserve the vitality of our downtown. It must protect and preserve the retail villages of Glenville and Byram. It says we must enhance Putnam Avenue by promoting residential mixed-use development that is pedestrian-friendly and does not add to traffic congestion. In response to that question, Mr. Crary said it is up to the RTM to decide whether the project conforms to the P O C D. We asked Mr. Crary whether the proposed CVS would devalue retail land in Glenville, in Byram, or downtown, so that the net impact on the grand list might be zero or negative over time. Mr. Crary said no assessment has been made of the impact of this development on the grand list. We asked Mr. Crary if the proposed project, I'm sorry, in response to a question from Harry Labine, former Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Crary said this item is a municipal improvement. We then heard from Donald Heller, Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission, who attended at our request. Mr. Heller said the RTM should use the new plan of conservation and development to guide its decision on this item. Mr. Heller said Planning and Zoning has not made a decision on this development. Mr. DiMarco from District Nine presented a petition with 296 signatures. The petition says, quote, "The undersigned residents object to the proposed sale of town land and to zoning variances that would, that would allow a large CVS-type retail store to be built at six forty-four West Putnam Avenue. This proposal violates the spirit and letter of our plan of conservation and development, goals of which are to protect our village centers, community character, and quality of life. This proposed use will increase traffic congestion and undermine our historic retail villages." Mr. DiMarco said most of the signatures are residents who are customers of the pharmacy in Glenville and at a, and at a store in Pemberwick. He said residents sign voluntarily, that no one asked them to sign. After discussion, the committee voted zero in favor, eleven opposed, with one abstention. Reasons for the no votes, District One, Two, Four, and Seven, because of questions about the appraisal, because of the increase in impervious surface, and because of the proposed, because the proposed use is in conflict with our P O C D. District Three questions whether the town properly considered the need for the land for trucks exiting the transfer station. District Five doesn't want the town to sell land that will contribute to a bigger building, doesn't like drive-throughs, and thinks the project is not environmentally sound. District Six doesn't want bigger building, objects to multiple variances. District Eight voted no, because the project conflicts with the P O C D, and was angry that Mr. Crary came unprepared to answer criticisms of the appraisal that had been set many days in advance.
Mr. Berg, I think it's appropriate. I, a committee report is not a transcript of the meeting. It's a summary. And I think you've given us the summary.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DiMarco, Chair of our Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The committee took up this item again, as we did in June, when we asked our town official, guests, to confirm that the existing width of Holly Hill Lane is enough to include the addition of a sidewalk and sufficient traffic lanes to accommodate the proposed project. The answer was yes, according to the highway manual. The committee was apprised of a new law enacted in July, Public Act zero-nine-one-fifty-four, which mandates accommodations for all users shall be a routine part of planning, design, construction, and operating activities of all state highways and public roads. The point was made that an overabundance of parking possible at the site, along with a significant traffic generator being proposed, traffic volume and congestion will surely intensify, so the roadway and intersection must be designed to mitigate this by making the site safely accessible and passable by alternative modes. The chairman related he had met with DPW Commissioner Seibert, Deputy Commissioner Thompson, and Traffic Coordinator Evans on August twenty-sixth, and subsequent to that meeting was told by the commissioner that the post road currently does narrow at the intersection with Holly Hill, leaving little or no shoulder space, and that this will be noted to be addressed in the site design approval process. The question remains whether widening of the post road would have any effect on the footprint or location of the proposed building, and on-grade parking such that some portion of the town right-of-way that's in question would be necessary to accommodate the proposed building or any variation. Additionally, it was made known that it is, it is currently a safety concern with Holly Hill Lane along the right-of-way in question, caused by large truck traffic exiting from the transfer station and adjacent sites, and poor sightlines. Finally, the committee was informed, as you just heard, that the RTM has advised to consider the guidance of the P O C D, the 2009 P O C D, in deciding whether to sell the right-of-way, and that the pending sale is considered, to be considered a municipal improvement. After a lengthy discussion, a vote was taken, five in favor, two against, and two abstained. District Five and Twelve voted no, feeling that the land leaves, leaves the town no options for the future, selling of the land would leave no options. District Three and Nine abstained for lack of answers to important questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item ten. Mr. Crary, Town Administrator.
I'd just like to add a few more points to the reports that were given. The owner of six forty-four West Putman Avenue has came before the Planning and Zoning Commission and basically went through a preliminary planning process. They haven't begun the final process. The preliminary process that they went through received favorable response from the P N Z. They're now in the process of putting together their paperwork to submit a final plan. At that time, there was discussion about their desire to put a, a drive-through for the pharmacy for CVS. The proposal they have for the lot is a 35,000-square-foot building. If a drive-through was added, the building would be slightly bigger. From what I've been told from Diane Fox, it would be 600 square feet larger. Because of their desire to have the drive-through for pickup and the pharmacy, they have inadequate setbacks on the particular site, and their solution for meeting their setback requirements was to approach the town to see if we would be interested in selling a piece of property, as I said before, 4,000 square feet in size. Now, this property is about 10 to 15 feet in width by about 300 feet in length. It's a gore, a strip, and it's actually outside the 50-foot right-of-way that the town requires for all roads throughout the community. When we discussed it with Public Works, and we discussed it with other departments, we looked at all of our alternatives, opportunities that we might have in the future on Holly Hill for expansion of the road. Perhaps it would have something to do, some effect on future development in the, the transfer station. We looked at all the possibilities we could think of. In the conclusion the departments had, and our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen was that, no, we do not need this property for any future purpose. If the, if the town wishes to sell it as, as a land that is no purpose or no value to us, there's no reason not to do it. no reason not to do it.
Let me, during your pause, this potentially is a problem we get into when we limit debate. I just wanted, I neglected to remind our speakers that we have a three-minute limit in effect.
On the value, I'm certainly not an appraisal appraiser, and I did not become an expert on it, and I would not even debate that issue. But I would say that the particular property, 300,000 divided by 4,083 square feet, comes to a price per square foot of $73. The adjoining land where the building will actually be built is appraised at $81 a square foot. We looked at it internally as being, that's comparable, it's something that's not unusual. Because this is a strip, 10 to 15 feet wide by 300 feet long, this is not the kind of thing you're going to get comparables of. It would be one thing to get a comparable for a square where you'd put a residence or even a commercial property. This does not fit that type of situation because the only property owner that could possibly want it would be the adjoining one. This is our opportunity to sell it, if we desire to sell it. And the final thing I would say is, I did talk to Ted Gwartney about it. He did not do an independent appraisal of this property, but when he reviewed the values we had, 300,000 for 4,000 square feet in a commercial zone, he said, "That's a very fair price," and he would recommend to the Board of Selectmen that we sell it. So, our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen and their recommendation to you is that this is not land that we need for any municipal purposes, and we recommend you sell it.
All right, thank you. Further discussion on Item Number 10. Peter Crumbine, our Selectman. And again, I remind our speakers, we have a three-minute limit in effect.
So noted. I'd just like to make a few comments here. I just want you to think about what's going to happen if you turn this down. The CVS store is still going to go in. There's still going to be whatever extra traffic is going to be. The difference is, number one, the town's going to be $300,000 poorer for land that they probably will never need, and secondly, if you turn it down, we're going to lose the drive-through. And that drive-through is going to be used primarily by Greenwich citizens. It's going to be used by handicapped people that have trouble getting out of their cars, perhaps impossible to get out of their cars. It's going to be a real service to the community. So, I would, before you jump all over this thing, think about what's going to happen if you approve it versus if you don't approve it. The store's still going to be there. The difference is the $300,000 and the drive-through. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wetmore, are you interested in speaking at this point? John Wetmore, Assistant Town Attorney, Special Town Attorney.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. It's a pleasure to be back before you again. I just wanted to make a few comments in the time available to me. I think most importantly, what's been reported, it seems to me repeatedly, is that this would be in violation in some way of the plan development. I'm here to tell you tonight that I don't think anything could be further from the truth. In fact, it has also been reported that the Planning and Zoning Commission has not looked at this for MI. It has, in fact, not only looked at it, but approved the MI for the sale of this strip. As has been pointed out by Mr. Crumbine and the Town Administrator, from zoning purposes, this is an as-of-right development, the CVS, for office and retail. This is permitted use. That's going in no matter what happens here tonight with you good folks. In addition, from a planning perspective, this is not prohibited under our plan of development. This is not restricted in any way. The decision that the Planning and Zoning Commission makes when it grants municipal improvement approval is the clear determination. Is this in contravention? Is this contrary to or in any way opposed to the plan development? They've decided it isn't. In addition, there's been a lot of talk about the valuation process. We were approached by the prospective buyer back in October of last year. Our office immediately sought an independent appraisal. We hired a firm that our office had used many times in the past, which Mr. Gwartney and others had confidence in, Tim Girian from Liberty Unlimited. He came back with a number, $303,000, which is based on what his view was of the comparables that he looked at, based on the square footage of the usable FAR to this prospective buyer. As Mr. Crumbine said, it's important to remember, if we turn this down tonight, or if you good folks don't approve this tonight, there are no other buyers for this property. This is a one-time experience, so to speak. It was referred to in the committee report that Mr. Heller had talked about this not having been approved. What I think should have been reported was that the MI had, in fact, been granted, that preliminary site plan approval has already been granted for this project, but that a final site plan is contingent upon whether the RTM approves the sale of this property or not. If they don't, the net result is the office space, the retail space will be built, it will be a more narrow, longer building. That will be the only net effect. I've heard in the committee reports talks about drainage and problems of that nature. These are being addressed. This has not gone for a final site plan approval yet. A wetlands permit's been issued, the zoning board has granted variances, the MI has been granted. This is really the last step before going back for a final site plan approval.
Thirty-second.
Thank you. In terms of how this was done, Ted Gwartney, as was referred to a few minutes ago, our assessor, after the fact and after concerns were raised about the independent appraisal, took a look at this in terms of his own analysis, and as of September 17th, came up with a value of approximately $326,000. The two numbers are not very far off. I negotiated this on behalf of the town. I thought this was a good deal for the town in terms of, we got very close to what the appraised value was, and this is a one-time experience. I think if we do not, in fact, approve this, then there's likelihood that they will build the other template, as I talked about in the committees. There's about five that CVS uses. They'll just go to another one, and that will be the end of this story. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Emerson Stone, District 10.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fellow delegates, I'd like to give you a slightly different viewpoint. I almost never speak here. Being silent makes my contribution to the public good, I've always felt. But tonight, I need a few moments of your time. I was founding chairman of the Town's Land Acquisition Committee in the late 1980s. I was also founding chairman of the Sierra Club in Connecticut earlier than that. In the 1980s, we managed to save appropriate town lands for conservation, and we did do that, as some of you may recall. Now, as a member of the Land Use Committee from District 10, that committee which voted overwhelmingly against this proposal, as you heard, I hope to offer a larger vision of how to think about those words, "land use." The owners of the property under discussion on West Putnam Avenue say that they require still more bigness on top of bigness, to the tune of about 4,000 square feet adjoining their property. You know how the argument on these things goes. It's basically that town leadership says yes, and it's just this one piece of land, and it's a small piece that they see no use for, at least not at the moment, and we can get a lot of money for it, and we can use that $300,000 right now. Yes, and you also know this, in fairness, the current economic downturn will end. They always do. One other thing to try to remember, when we sell public land to meet temporary public needs, the town gets the money and spends it. If you do the math against the size of our total annual budget, 342 million or so, over the 8,760 hours in a year, you'll find that our brand-new $300,000 will last just about seven hours. And the land? Yes, it too would be gone forever. So, we then quickly lose both land and money, and a development that, as had been heard, there's disagreement about, against the brand-new plan of conservation and development. The town has options about keeping solvent in any year, with less permanent sacrifices than are involved here. Every loss like this one, of openness, of air, of water, of quietude, of greenery, brings us all that much closer to being the City of Greenwich. Thank you.
Vince DiMarco, District Nine. I'd like to offer another perspective. I live very close to that piece of property. I ride a bicycle past that piece of property, both on Holly Hill Lane and on the post road. I also, and by the way, did not author that petition. When I found out how many people were signing it in Glenville, I said, "Wow, let me go bring it to Pemberwick and see if people feel the same way there." But my perspective is this, I met with the developer, or the owner, I should say, owner, developer, I guess, way back when he was first offering a residential development there. He called me and said, "I know you're interested in this. Come and see me, I want to show you something." I said, "Okay, fine." I think he'd already seen, PNZ had probably seen it preliminarily already, but I took him for his word. I think he was sincere in saying, "I really want to make a signature project here. I want to make something really good for the town." In my view, that's what we all want. We wanted amenity there. It appears that this is an as-of-right development. He's within his right to do this. The question we're asking is whether or not we want a bigger building, a little, slightly bigger building with a drive-through. It's really basically the question. But to me, I think we look at the infrastructure first. We look at safety first. Is it safe? If someone rides up the post road on a bicycle, do we not want to encourage that? Do we want to say, "Forget it? You know, that just doesn't happen here?" Where are we going? And what about sidewalks? Can we make sidewalks wide enough on both sides, Holly Hill and the post road? To me, I think those are the more important questions right now. I'm all for saving open space, but I'm all for safety as well. I think that's really important. The people in our area want to see the whole filled, and they want to see a project that's going to work for us. We wanted amenity. Thank you.
Peter Berg, District Eight.
Good evening again. I'm voting against this item for three reasons: the appraisal, the POCD, and the smell. First, this deal was not based on a reliable appraisal. Real estate professionals, including three fellow RTM members here tonight, say the Liberty Unlimited appraisal is unreliable. When we sell town land, we have a duty to bargain with accurate and reliable information. Otherwise, the taxpayers may be getting cheated. Some may argue that the town should sell this land for any amount, because as Mr. Crary said at Land Use, the land is worthless to the town. But Mr. Carter from District Six, a commercial mortgage broker, a banker, says, "It does not matter what this land is worth to the town. The issue is, how much is this land worth to the developer?" One professional appraiser says this land is worth three times what we are selling it for. Some may argue that we should sell this land because it will increase tax revenues. But consider, when property tax values go up on Route One, will tax revenues go down elsewhere? Across Connecticut and America, when property values go up on the highway, they soon drop in their villages and downtowns. When hundreds of people go to this new CVS instead of Finch's in Glenville, or Greenview Pharmacy in Byram, or CVS on the avenue, won't property values there go down? This is a zero-sum game. When you get big, everyday retail stores on the highway, people don't buy more toothpaste, cigarettes, and candy, they just buy it elsewhere. Secondly, the proposed development does not conform to our plan of conservation and development. Under our charter, the sale of land is a municipal improvement, an MI. As Mr. Labine has stated, for an MI, the POCD is not just advisory, it rises to a high standard. This proposal does not preserve the vitality of our downtown, it does not protect and preserve the retail villages of Glenville and Byram, or enhance Putnam Avenue by promoting residential mixed-use development, or any other goal I can find in the POCD. Is this land worthless to the town? Well, I ask, is there value to the town to limit development that does not conform to the plan? Is there value to limit development that will undermine property values in Glenville and Byram, and limiting traffic congestion on the post road? To those residents who want to see something, anything, built in the hole, we are all sick of the hole. To those who want the RTM to vote yes, because they are sick of the hole, I ask, can you live with a smaller CVS?
Thank you. Michael Carter, District Six, to be followed by Tom Canelius, District Three.
Thank you, Michael Carter, District Six. Just wanted to take issue with the valuation used in the appraisal. As a matter of background, as Peter said, I'm head of a commercial real estate lending operation at a bank in New York, and I read appraisals frequently. Appraisal for property for which there is no independent development use can be quite tricky. The monetary value of a parcel such as the one in question is not that of its standard price per foot as a standalone piece of property, because it cannot be developed by itself. What is commonly done in valuing assemblage property is to determine the increase in value that the small parcel brings to the assemblage. This value is typically extra FAR, but it also should include the value of increases and setbacks, building lot dimensions, approved access, parking, circulation, and how those benefits allow the developer to build something bigger and generate more rental income. More specifically, according to the site plan presented by the town parcel, this allows for the creation of two drive-up windows for two retailers, as well as access to the underground garage from the upper deck. Unfortunately, this added value was never considered in the appraisal, only additional FAR was valued. I would argue the value of the parcel to the developer is much more for the added features of the town land rather than the additional FAR. As a matter of fact, the developer is only using 685 square feet of the 1960 of additional FAR. I also question the value that the additional buildable area, how it was determined. As we heard earlier, it took three alternate comps, one in Stamford, behind the SciTech Building, purchased in '04, the developer's own parcel purchased in '03, and the Anthropology Site purchased this in 1999. No adjustment was made for parcel size, location, zoning, or date of purchase, as is typical, saying that the appraiser said he could not find any evidence that those things made any difference in Greenwich at this time. He adjusted the values that he found at those sites by, and I quote, "subtracting the depreciated value of the existing improvements from the known sale price of the property to arrive at the value of the land." I won't bore you as to what that means, but it's not specifically based on what is buildable at the site. He then picked the middle of the three. There was no averaging involved. That number's 154.75 per foot. He applied that solely to the FAR, not to the overall footage, without explanation.
Thirty-second.
Just to jump, that number came up with a 303,000. However, if you go to page 40 in the appraisal, the appraiser says, and I quote, "The market value of the land is 631,844." That is in the appraiser's certification. So, there may be explanations for these contradictions, but I believe we should vote no at this price, and until we get further explanation as to how use of this land is benefiting the developer and the extra value he gets from it. Thank you.
Tom Canelius, District Three, to be followed by Christine Edwards, District Eight.
Good evening. My problem tonight is that when big trailer trucks come out of the dump, they exit Holly Hill, you know, to Holly Hill Lane. They take a right-hand turn and cross the street into oncoming traffic. This is a very dangerous situation. Then they pull down towards the entrance of Holly Hill and cross over again into oncoming traffic. It is, if anybody wants to go down tomorrow and watch this happen, it is an accident waiting to happen. Most of District Three is for the sale of the property. Most of the District Three is for the sale of the property. But when you exit out of the dump, the portion of the property that is for sale could be used to widen the road and make that part of it safer. The property does not extend up enough to the entrance of Holly Hill facility to remedy that problem. But there is a scale that is not being used down behind the buildings, in the lower building, that could be operational for 15,000 to 20,000 dollars. This would create, none of the trucks have to come out of the dump and go back into the dump, they can just go down and weigh and go out the way they do now, out of Arnold's. So our district is very concerned, before an accident happens, my question through the moderator to the town officials, I don't see Amy here anymore, but what is the plan the town has for remedying this very dangerous situation? Is it going to be, can we use some of the funds from the sale of the property to get the scale up and running? Or are we just going to sit back and wait and have an accident? Because these drivers are very aggressive. I'm down the dump all the time, I see it happen all the time. People don't know what the trucks are doing when they're following the trucks, they don't know which way to go. When the truck goes this way to go into the entrance of the dump, they get frozen. And you've got oncoming traffic, same way, it's just, it's definitely going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we keep getting the speakers, and if there is a town official who can answer that before we vote, we'll get that answer.
Okay.
Christine Edwards, District Eight, to be followed by Michael Wetsek, District Eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and colleagues. No land is worthless if it has a value to us and to the developer, both have value. One of the things that really concerned me with this was, it's not just a throwaway piece of land, it does give almost 2,000 extra square feet that can be developed. If we look at even right now, a value of $50 a square foot on a commercial basis for that, that over 10 years is almost a million dollars that we could have, that they, so there's value for that land, just being used for commercial development. On the other hand, one of the other things that really concerns me, and those of you who've seen the end of Greenwich Avenue where Peoples is expanding, by giving this worthless strip of land to the developer, you allow the setback to increase closer to the street. That's what's happened in Peoples, where we had that little green park area is now being developed right to the street and sidewalk. You have the right to do that as a developer, but do we want to do that and potentially lose, what Tom has said, having a potential turning lane, so that we'd have better egress for the traffic? The other thing that concerned me is the idea of having this very easy ability to drive up and get drugs, the drugs are a little bit different than getting your hamburger and soda, a little bit more concern on that. But more than that is, anyone who's been to the town hall meeting room in the last few weeks has seen a very large window that describes illegal idling. Idling is contributing to a lot of problems if we are having buses, or if we're having people waiting in line as a drive-through. So we're creating an idling situation. And please note that there's a big sign on the Byram Pharmacy, Greenview, that they will deliver. So somebody who has children at home, who doesn't want to go into the C V S to pick up their medications, can have them delivered by a local, family-owned pharmacy. So if we want to look at what the value of how we use our communities, we have the choice, we're the R T M, we make the decisions for any of these municipal improvements. Do we want to reserve that land for potential future turning lane, which might be necessary for either the trucks going to Holly Hill, or just from traffic itself, to not just have two lanes, but have a third for turning right onto West Putnam? We don't know if that's going to be something we really need to consider. And I think that selling the land is a process that is finished, done forever. And we have to really be very concerned with how we shepherd the things that we own here in town. This is something that may come value to us in another year. Somebody else at Land Use had suggested maybe putting trees there in that strip. But we could do that and still use that later if we need it for a turning lane, but once we sell, it's an irrevocable situation, it is done forever. So my view on this would be, it's hasty, it adds more, a much larger building, it gives, yes, a drive-through, which is more traffic and idling, and we have to look at what the possibility might be for the future. And we're the ones who are here to protect the future and protect the town of Greenwich for whatever our needs may be over time. Thank you for your consideration to vote no on this.
Michael Wetsek, District Eleven, to be followed by Liz, pardon me? Mr. Petroselli, state your point of information.
Well, Mr. Petroselli, this is the answer to that question. A motion for the previous question is in order under Roberts' rules. But our practice in the R T M has been to allow as full an opportunity to debate as is reasonable under the circumstances. We have been discussing this for 40 minutes, and we do have other items. I note, there have been individuals waiting patiently, and it would be my intention to call on those who have not spoken, which I count four people. And at the end of the opportunity for those individuals to speak, I will recognize you for a motion for the previous question.
Respectfully, at the budget meeting, we had four additional speakers.
We had 11. Mr. Petroselli, this is not a debate. I've explained to you, it is in order, you can, so what I'm saying is, I will not accept your motion for the previous question at this point. I would accept it after those four speakers. You can always appeal any ruling of the moderator, and it would be up to the body to do what it wants.
I'd actually like to appeal that rule.
Okay. Is there a second?
Sorry, I can't hear you.
All right. The question now before the body, we have an appeal of the moderator's decision not to accept a motion for the previous question at this time, because of, as I explained, wanting to offer those who have been waiting patiently the opportunity to address us on this. The appeal is not debatable, and it requires an affirmative in the negative to overrule the moderator's decision. Because the question that I will put to you is, shall the decision of the moderator be sustained? If you are in favor of allowing, in essence, allowing these four speakers, these four individuals to speak, you should vote yes. If you want to immediately cut off debate and proceed to vote on the merits, you should vote no. And it will require a majority in the negative, a majority of no votes, to overturn the ruling of the moderator. So, does everybody understand I'm about to call for that vote? If you want to allow these individuals to speak, you vote yes. If you do not, you vote no. All those, so the question is, shall the decision of the moderator be sustained? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That appeal has failed. Mr. Wetsek, to be followed by Liz Campbell.
Mr. Moderator, members of the R T M, I say, let's take the money. Let's face it, if the town doesn't sell this tiny and essentially otherwise useless parcel now, we'll forever lose the opportunity to sell it at any price. C V S will simply build a smaller building on the main site that it already has. Not selling the parcel won't stop the C V S. I urge you to vote yes for the sale.
Liz Campbell, to be followed by Chris von Keiseling, District Eight.
Liz Campbell, District Five. As an alternate to land use, I was able to vote at the meeting because our chair was not present. I am not in favor of this item. Some time ago, the town sold this property to C V S, who drew up building plans for their store. Now, in order to have a drive-up, they have offered to purchase some town land along with a new plan. I do not favor the town selling this land to C V S, because doing so will enable them to build a larger building, as well as a drive-through, which will certainly produce considerable exhaust. The result of this also is more impervious surfaces, less green space. Approving this does not follow the major P O D C D recommendations. It also complicates traffic patterns, both at the site and those related to the transfer station. In addition, this is a complex, confusing item and process, because in some ways, the R T M, a legislative body, is being asked to participate in a planning and zoning matter before the P N Z takes the commission, asks the commission to consider it. I hope members will vote against this project. Thank you.
Chris von Keiseling, District Eight, to be followed by Todd Ledonia, District Eight.
Ms. Melongard, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. You know, we've got blue-sky theory, which is wonderful, and in textbooks and in classrooms, that's great. We're now on-the-ground reality. So let's bring all that great theory of planning and the plan of development and everything back down to the ground in reality. First of all, we have the P N Z, which is a large and hard-working board, who has made its opinion known about this project. They have approved it under the circumstances, or indicating they would. Trust the P N Z. Why don't we do a cost-benefit on this? And most of you are financial people, so all appeal to that kind of rationale. If we, the question before us, by the way, is whether or not a 700-square-foot drive-in, let's cut all this other blue sky. If we approve this sale, that allows them to put another additional 700 square foot for that little bump-out drive-in for somebody to sit in and do what they're doing. We're not talking about a huge, big effect, you know, of addition to this property, as de minimis, as they would say in land use terms. So that's really not the question. What do we get, what do we lose? Well, the developer already offered us way back in this process, it's been going on for quite a few years, I think now, they offered us new sidewalks, bus stops, and more importantly, a few hundred thousand dollars' worth of traffic lights and intersection renewal there at Holly Hill, the same intersection we're talking about of all this traffic, as part of the benefit of their program to do their property. The opposition has made that disappear. So that's gone, it's off the table, we've lost that. Now, we talk about sidewalks and everything, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars are we talking about there? How many hundreds of thousands of dollars in traffic lights, et cetera? Not to mention bus stops, where we're trying to make people off the road and make it more accessible. So let's think how our theory applies on the ground. After the sale, there will still be a 50-foot right-of-way, which is a standard right-of-way for all town roads. The street that you know is not 50 feet. The street that you and I have driven on to the dump, excuse me, recycling center, is not 50 feet. It can be widened, so understand that this is not restricting in that sense. If we don't sell this land, the town retains a, I don't know if you've seen it, but it's something like this aisle here that goes on for 4,000 feet forever. It's at various widths and lengths and rocks and things like that. It's full of golden rod and weeds and things of that nature, which the town now has to maintain. By the way, if somebody's riding a bicycle along there and there's a problem or something, it's the town's liability, because it's all within their aspect in that. So we have that, we retain that liability with that right that everybody's talking about, and the cost of maintaining it. If we sell it, what you get, as the gentlemen from District Six were saying, better circulation on-site. Well, there are mutual benefits.
Thirty seconds.
Mutual benefits come out. Better circulation on-site is better circulation for the community as well. It makes the project work better, which makes everything work better. It lessens the bulk, because it squares the building, so the bulk mass that you see on the Post Road is not as overpowering as it would be if you make it longer, or somebody's saying, lengthening it to fit this contorted situation. And C V S landscapes and maintains the property across the dump. I will put to you that the biggest effect of this will be that the truck lot there across from where the C V S hole in the ground is will become upgraded property, not a truck lot because of this. So I think it'll improve, rather than have a negative impact on the area.
Todd Ledonia, District Eight, to be followed by Michael Petroselli, District Twelve.
Mr. Chairman, fellow members, distinguished guests, Todd Ledonia, District Eight, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. This is not the first appraisal I've read. These documents, they're ultimately subjective. They're decisions that are disguised with a lot of objective facts that may or may not apply to this specific property. This piece of property appears to be valueless to anyone except the abutting landowner. I'm against the town selling pieces of property all over. However, this piece, as Chris just said, is a little bit wider and a little more narrow than this aisle, and goes for 400 feet. It might have been more appropriate to have gotten a couple more appraisals, but what it all boils down to is, do you want to sell it? Do you believe John Wetmore negotiated with the best interests of the town as his fiduciary responsibility? I do believe that. So upon careful thought, I do say, I trust John Wetmore negotiating an arms-length transaction for the town, and this is a useless ribbon of ground for the town. Let's take the money and collect the taxes later. Thank you.
Mr. Petroselli? Did you want to offer a motion? Mr. Diddakis?
Mr. Moderator, I move the previous question.
Is there a second? All right. It has been, the motion for the previous question has been moved and seconded. That is a motion to cut off debate. If you are in favor of immediately proceeding to vote on Item 10, you should vote in favor. If you are opposed, I don't even know if there, are there any other speakers interested in addressing this? Yes? Commissioner Seabird?
Did you want me to answer that question?
Well, no, I think I wanted to know, all right, so there are additional speakers interested. Keep that in mind as you vote on Mr. Diddakis's motion for the previous question. All those in favor of cutting off debate and proceeding to vote immediately on Item 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion is carried. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 10, and proceed to poll your delegation? All right, we will continue with the next separate item, which is our child safety zone ordinance. May we have that resolution? Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the R T M, this is to consider and act upon the following resolution, requested by the Office of the First Selectmen and unanimously approved by the Board of Selectmen, resolve that the representative town meeting enacts the following child safety zone ordinance. And it is as appears on the call.
Thank you. A member please move the adoption of the resolution. Resolution on Item 11 has been moved and seconded. May we have the committee reports? We will begin with Legislative and Rules and its chairman, Doug Wells.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, our committee heard last Monday evening from Peter Tessie, Wayne Fox, Detective Cordeselli, and Police Chief David Ridberg of the Greenwich Police Department. Our committee voiced many reservations about this ordinance. The concerns that we have are that the areas covered by the child safety zone ordinance include areas that are ill-defined, overly broad, would be hard to monitor, and would serve to be punitive to sex offenders who have no history of crimes against children. Of particular concern was the language "educational facilities," which is part of the ordinance. Attorney Fox acknowledged that the Greenwich Library System could be considered an educational facility, which would therefore prevent anybody who is within this child sex offender status be prevented from going to the libraries. The Havemeyer Building is an educational facility, even though there are no children present, and under the terms of this, they would be prevented from going there. The Western Greenwich Civic Center and the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center both have child care facilities present, which would prevent a sex offender from using the parking lot or entering the facility for any other purpose, and there are many different offices in those buildings. While the purpose of the ordinance is purportedly to protect our children from sex offenders, the definition of a sex offender is much broader. It encompasses offenses against adults. We receive no information from the police department or any of the proponents that an offender who commits a sex offender against an adult has a greater propensity to do so against children. Attorney so against children. Attorney Fox offered us an amendment of sex offender to narrow the definition to only those offenders who commit crimes against children. However, that more narrow definition is not part of the ordinance at this time. Page 22 of your explanatory comments indicates that there is a bill before the Connecticut General Assembly, which would require a risk assessment board to create a scale to determine which sex offenders should be prohibited from living within 1,000 feet of a school. Some of our members in our committee would not vote for any ordinance, however narrowly defined, until we receive guidance from the state of Connecticut as to which sex offenders should be restricted from child safety zones. We also had general concerns whether this ordinance will provide any meaningful protection for our children. Police acknowledge they already have the right to approach an individual to determine his identity and ask him reasons for why he is remaining in any area. There is also the more important question of whether the likelihood of a risk of a $100 fine would serve as a deterrent to a child predator. Based on the foregoing, our committee felt that this ordinance needs revisions to narrow the scope of the safety zones, limit the restrictions to child sex offenders, not sex offenders in general, and to provide more access to safety zones when accompanied by other adult family members. Even with these changes, several of our committee members doubt it should be passed in any event because it creates a false sense of security, creates a possibility of a blight of signage around our parks, schools, and playgrounds, and puts the town at risk for expensive litigation. We therefore move to refer this matter back to the Legislative and Rules Committee so that it can work with the town attorneys to revise the ordinance. Our vote on the motion to refer was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Before we get the next committee report, let me announce the vote of the two votes we have taken. The vote on the consents, those were Items 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 170 in favor, 0 opposed, and 2 abstaining. The consent calendar items have carried. And the vote on the combined items, Item 4, the waste receptacles, and Item 8, which was accepting $500, those in favor, 175, opposed 0, abstaining 0, those items have carried. Mr. Brady with the report of our Education Committee on Item 11.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members, guests. The Education Committee met last Monday night, September 14th, to consider this item. All districts were represented, except for District 1. The committee's vote on this item was 4 in favor, 7 opposed, no abstentions. First Selectmen Tessie, Attorney Fox, Chief Ridberg, Officer Cordeselli, and sex offender registrant Ernest Dupal were present to assist us. A representative of the community and police partnership, CAP, was invited but did not attend. Mr. Tessie presented the ordinance. He said that it was requested by CAP. It specifies child safety zones, which are defined as town-owned or leased parks, schools, playgrounds, teen centers, related parking areas, but excluding the interior public streets and adjacent sidewalks. These would be placed off limits to Connecticut sex offender registrants. The ordinance provides access to such facilities to attend public meetings, voting, private meetings with school officials concerning a custodial residence's children, and pickup and drop-off of those children. Attendance to sports events, graduation, et cetera, are prohibited. There is no provision for granting or waiving provisions. A registrant found in a child safety zone would be required to leave and find $100 if he or she reappeared in it or any other one. One question on, the question on libraries, since these are neither town-owned nor leased, I think as the statute or as the ordinance is drawn, libraries would be not part of the child safety zones. The ordinance's purpose is to protect children from sex offenders. Generally, a sex offender is a person convicted in any jurisdiction of a crime defined as a sex crime, who, as part of his or her sentence, is required to register on the convicting jurisdiction sex offender register and who is a Connecticut resident. The registration requirement may extend beyond the completion of other portions of the registrant's sentence, such as parole, and may be for as long as life. Different jurisdictions have different standards. There are five registrants in Greenwich, about 60 in Stamford, and about 180 within a 10-mile radius, including those New York residents not convicted in Connecticut, to whom this ordinance would not be applicable because they're not on the Connecticut list. Most of the presentations concerned the defensibility of the ordinance. Mr. Fox asserted his belief that the ordinance complies with state and federal constitutional requirements, and that if challenged, the town would prevail. The committee had a number of questions. Among them are, how many actions would have taken place under this ordinance had it been in effect? After some discussion among the police, it appears there might have been as many as two over the last five years. Why aren't non-municipal areas covered, such as private schools, church playgrounds, places where children congregate, libraries, et cetera? The answer is that these were deemed to have better security or be less legally defensible were we to include those. We asked what evidence is there that such ordinances are effective? None is available. The police representatives indicated that they do not need this ordinance to enforce the law. They asserted that sex offenders do have a high recidivism rate. However, in the case of Greenwich's offenders, registrants, these have been violations of administrative provisions, primarily timely notice of address changes, not substantive sex crimes. Not that these are unimportant, but they aren't sex crimes. They were a failure to change address cards. The committee's discussion focused on two areas. Does the ordinance do anything useful, and what changes should be made to improve it? As far as usefulness, since the police indicated that they neither asked for this nor believe it necessary, many of the committee believe the ordinance unnecessary. Since there are so many areas and potentially many nearby sex offenders who would not be covered, they believe it is pointless to enact it, and it would be in the form of a, not, it would appear to provide protection while in fact not providing any. As far as changes that were suggested, we covered two types: changes to the definition of the child safety zones and changes to the sex offender restrictions. With respect to the child safety zone definitions, we considered changes, including adding such things as libraries, private schools, churches, places where children congregate, such as candy stores and other non-public places. A straw vote indicated there was no support for attempting to develop an amendment to broaden or narrow the definition, nor was there support for attempting to carve out areas which might be accessed or times during the day or year, such as during non-school periods, when registrants would be able to use park or playground ballfields, for example. As far as the sex offender restrictions, the committee also considered changes such as providing an appeal process, providing for exemptions for an event or blanket events for individuals. Again, there was insufficient support for even attempting to create such an amendment. The committee's recommendation is to defeat this item. Its vote was 4 in favor, 7 opposed, 0 abstaining. The no votes were that the ordinance is fundamentally unfair, too broad, no compelling reasons offered to support it, fails to meet its objectives. Districts 3, 4, 9, and 12 were in favor of the ordinance. Thank you.
Karen Sada Khan with the Parks and Recreation Committee report. Before we begin, let me announce the vote on Item 10, which was the approval of sale of town property. Those in favor, 92, opposed 85, abstaining 5. That item is carried.
Good evening again. We took up Item 11 with extensive number of guests with us. We had Wayne Fox, Peter Tessie, Sam Romeo, Detective Cordeselli, and Chief Ridberg, who were basically there on the more supportive side, and we had a Mr. Dupals, who was there to question the ordinance. The issue of the broad definition of spaces included in the child safety zone, including beaches, parks, libraries, et cetera, was of concern. The committee was torn as to whether or not this ordinance took away too many individual rights and could stand up in court. However, the committee was supportive of having such an ordinance, feeling the priority was to protect children. The question by some members was to refine the specifics of the ordinance while still accomplishing the goal of safety for children. Mr. Dupals spoke of the lasting punitive consequences of such an ordinance to the offenders who have been punished enough, who have served their time, been rehabilitated, but who are registered sex offenders. The committee reviewed the ordinances in other Connecticut towns and the 22 states that have them. We decided to take several votes. The first vote was on the item as it was presented in the call. The vote was 6, 4, 2. Districts 6, 9, 10, and 11 voted no. Districts 2 and 5 abstained. One delegate was opposed to the proposed ordinance generally because he believed that the very limited effectiveness of the child's safety zone concept, and that, one, the ordinance does not enhance in any way the likelihood of detecting sex offenders in the zone, and, two, the requirement for a particular sex offender to stay away from schools or playgrounds can be achieved by conditions within the terms of probation or parole for that offender, was outweighed by the restrictions the proposed ordinance imposes on those sex offenders who have served their time in prison and have satisfactorily complied and completed the conditions of their probation or parole. We then took an additional vote on the concept of having the ordinance. That vote was 11-1-0, as District 10 voting no. Finally, we voted on referring the item back to Legislative and Rules, and that was 11-1-0, as District 10 voting no. Lastly, we polled the committee for their ideas on further changes we felt should be considered, and they are refining the application to the zone, using a better classification of the offenses, narrowing the designated zone, and increasing the fine amount, was a suggestion by one member. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Mr. Moderator, on behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee, I move that we refer this matter back to our committee for further work.
All right, that being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second. Discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to refer this item back to itself. Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the R T M. As you know, this item came to you from the Board of Selectmen, and it was acted upon unanimously by the members of the board. Both times, it came up for discussion. You acted last month by turning it down, by postponing it indefinitely because of concerns with the way it was drafted and for greater clarity. We heard you, and we went back and had our legal department take further review and further recommendation of changes. We once again are back before you, and frankly, I am encouraged by the fact more people better understand what our intentions are in bringing this to you and have embraced the concept of it. In its simplest form, this ordinance is giving the police department the ability to remove a registered sex offender from a designated area that you, the R T M, and we as a town decide. That seems to be in question, so that clearly requires further discussion and edification. But simply stated, it gives the police that tool to remove an individual on this list. Now, the list, the Connecticut sex offender list, has been deemed a constitutional resource. That was checked by the Board of Selectmen, Selectmen Lavery, with Attorney General Blumenthal. So the foundation by which we're using to identify the individuals who should not be in these designated areas has been validated. But clearly, there are more questions. I would support the motion to refer it to the Legislative and Rules and be willing to work with you to see to it that an ordinance that satisfies the greatest majority and addresses these concerns is acted upon favorably. It is essentially looking out for children. We talk about protecting the rights, the rights of those who are on the list. Let's not forget about what's underlying our intentions of doing this. It's to protect the rights of our children who cannot protect themselves. Thank you.
Further discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to refer. Jim Buttel, District 8. Speaking on the motion to refer.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, through you, a guest to the town attorney, I just have a question on procedure here. We are now at our September meeting. If we refer this to Legislative and Rules, we are referring it without instructions, so we're not telling them to bring it back to us in October or November. My concern is this. As you know, we all get reelected. The Board of Selectmen will be up for election as well. So my question is technically, how this works is if we don't, for example, act on this until November, it's my understanding that this can't carry through an election, both of this body and the Board of Selectmen, because if we modify an ordinance and adopt it, it would then have to go back to the Board of Selectmen. We may very well find we are adopting something that a prior Board of Selectmen had sent to us. So my question, Mr. Moderator, is how quickly does this need to occur for it to legally happen? In other words, must we act on it at our next meeting to give the board time if we make changes?
Mr. Buttel, and I will ask Mr. Fox if he has a different view, but we have addressed this question before. You are confusing ordinances with charter changes, which are required by our home rule procedure to be initiated by either the Board of Selectmen or the B E T. This is neither, this is not a charter amendment. We, the R T M, are the ordinance adopting authority. So anything we do does not have to go back to the Board of Selectmen, number one. Number two, the end of our term on December 31st does not cause pending matters to die. We are a living, breathing organization that has life beyond that term, and we could refer something to our Legislative and Rules Committee in September, and it could bring it back to us in whatever, with whatever membership it consists of at our March 2010 meeting.
Thank you.
If we do not give it any directions to bring it back at some earlier date. Mr. Fox, do you have any different view on that? Mr. Fox agrees. Further discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to refer.
Questions?
Mr. Edwards, District 8.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I rise to support the referral back to Legislative and Rules. There's some unintended consequences of this, which we should be very careful of, and I believe the Legislative and Rules should keep this in mind. Unfortunately, through the beach suit, we have already established a legal precedent, so it seems, of violating or potentially honoring people's right of free speech. Since this has already occurred in our town, we now open ourselves up in this new venue of whether we're denying people's right of free speech in those designated areas. The second important part is the police did not initiate this, that they seem, at least from what the reports were, to have tools to be able to address some of these concerns. The general legal situation here in Connecticut is that the state of Connecticut now is working on this, and that would supersede anything that we do locally, is my understanding. So I, again, rise to support the referral to Legislative and Rules, but also bringing out the point is that the state of Connecticut is working on this as well, and I think it's a duplication or a waste of effort for us to move forward until the state makes their determination. Thank you.
Further discussion on the pending motion to refer this to our Legislative and Rules Committee. I'm going to call on Sam Romeo, but before I do, I neglected to, when I was thanking our district chairs and other members for helping to recruit new candidates, I did want to thank Sam Romeo, who devoted one of his shows to that very topic, and we're grateful to that publicity. So, thank you. Sam Romeo, speaking on the motion to refer Item 11 to our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Yeah, that was from District 1490.
Yes, that's right.
I'm really at loss for words here. Something that I thought that would be embraced by this community apparently has taken a life of its own. Presently, there is no law pending before the state of Connecticut. There was a bill that died in committee because lack of action. So another bill would have to be introduced, so just to set that aside. And I keep hearing that the police didn't want this, or they didn't initiate it. It's kind of a misnomer. The police were totally in favor of this. We've heard from the Board of Selectmen, who supported it 3-0. We've heard from the superintendent of schools, who was on my radio show. of schools, who was on my radio show, who is and supported it. As a matter of fact, there was a caller who called in and asked if he was aware of this ordinance that was being put on the books. And he said, yes, he was. And he went on further to say, which really I thought he hit a home run with me, was that he said that, number one, as the superintendent of schools, his first obligation is the health and safety and welfare of our children. When we entrust our children to him, that's his number-one obligation, and then comes education. We've heard from the Board of Education, who didn't take a formal vote on this, but it came to, I know, District 12, and I think they've, they've had a statement that they're, they're in favor of this, this ordinance. So, and the police department is in total support of this, when the CAP Committee brought this thing forward. And something that I thought, like I say, would be a no-brainer, all of a sudden, we're worried about the rights of sex offenders. The committees who heard from the people who support this also heard from a registered sex offender who attended these meetings and spoke on why this was a bad ordinance. This ordinance is not unconstitutional. It's been challenged in five other states, and it was deemed not unconstitutional each state. I don't think that we're asking for a lot. I think that if, if the law needs to be amended, I think we need to act now, put the law on the books, and then if you want to put it back and amend it later, bring it back and amend it later. But please, let's do something. Let's not have a sign-out in front of town, you know, welcome registered sex offenders, is the way I would view this. And maybe, maybe I'm being, well, I'm sorry, but I think that this is something that we shouldn't be worried about being sued. We protect just one child. We've done our job. But I think it's incumbent upon us to get this ordinance passed and get it done now. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Yes, in the back? Is that Stephanie Palmino? Stephanie Palmino, District Six.
Actually, I'm not.
Okay. Stephanie Palmino, formerly of District Six.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and RTM members and members of the public. Many of you know me as a former RTM member from District Six, or as the Director of Nursing at Nathaniel Witherell for 13 years, or as the Community Health Planner for seven years. I also am the mother of a son who got drunk in college and is on a sex offender list, and he lives here in town. I wanted to speak to this issue because I think the ordinance itself is very flawed. There are certain facts, and believe me, I've learned more about this than I ever wanted to know. And I wanted to point out also that the rate of drinking in college and the correlation of people who get involved in sex offenses when they're drunk in college is rising, and the drinking problem here in Greenwich is a huge problem. So when you're voting, bear in mind that this could be impacting your own family as well. My child was probably amongst the least likely of people who would ever be in an event like this. You may have seen an article in the paper entitled "Parents Need to Ask How Safe is My Child's School." It was written by Erin Neal, Director of Safe Environments and the Victim Assistance Coordinator for the Diocese of Bridgeport. In it, she states, "Most frightening is the fact that child sex abuse is almost always committed by people we know and trust." There are lots of facts that I think people probably don't really realize. I think the child's safety zone thought is laudable and commendable. After all, who is not in favor of protecting our children? I think anyone who knows me knows that I have been a tremendous supporter of the police all my life. I support them now. I understand that the police have not asked for this action because they already have every tool they need, and this is not anything that's going to give them any further rights over what they have. Ninety-five percent of sex assault victims, including children, know their assaulter. They're not stranger events happening in the parks. A child is far more likely to be sexually abused by a relative, a family friend, a babysitter, or people in authority. Many child sex offenders never come to trial. They plead bargain, or being family members, the event is never brought forward. They never hit the Megan's List, which, by the way, was intended to identify child sex offenders. Here in Greenwich, there are five registered sex offenders out of 69, living within a five-mile radius. Of the five, only one has a crime against children, and that was taking pictures of children. To my knowledge, he's never laid a hand on a child. Another is listed as working in Greenwich but lives out of town. The largest study on sex offenders studied 9,691 of them and showed that 97 to 98 out of 100 non-child sex offenders do not reoffend. I think enacting this regulation in Greenwich will not increase child safety in any way. It will be challenged at great cost to the town. I know because I will support that challenge financially and other ways. It's already, the town is under great financial burden. Our town attorney, I think, would probably not object to going to court because his fee arrangement is such that he gets a certain amount up front and a huge amount for being in court. So I think that, I think that should be weighed into factor. I recommend heartily deferring this back to committee on the grounds that it will serve no purpose. It does not, we do not have child sex offenders here in town who have ever touched a child, and we have child sex offenders all over the place who would have no way of being known should they come to our community. I thank you.
I think I saw all the lawyers here eagerly bobbing their heads. All right. Further discussion on the motion to refer. I will take a, well, let's try a voice vote. If you are in favor of referring this to our Legislative and Rules Committee, you should vote in favor. If you are opposed and want to continue considering this tonight, you should vote no. All those in favor of the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to refer item 11 back to that committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion has carried. Item 11 is now in the lap of our Legislative and Rules Committee. All right. That brings us to the group of items that have been brought to us by the special committee, looking at our structure and rules. Now, I spoke at the beginning of a procedural device that would allow us to dispose of these without taking a final vote and treating them as if we had a first reading rule in effect. And I think the best way to do that is a motion to suspend the rules, essentially to allow us to hear reports, discussion, act on motions to amend, but not finally vote on any of these items. So in a moment, I will suggest that motion to suspend the rules. These items are number 12 through 21, and I am informed that the special committee has withdrawn item 21, which had to do with handing attendance cards to the town clerk. So that item will, is, is not be for us tonight. It has been withdrawn. It is not intended to bring it back at any time. All right. So with respect to the remaining, I believe that would be, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 items. The remaining 10 items, I would suggest a motion to suspend the rules to allow us to take these up individually and dispose of them when all discussion and any proposed motions to amend have been dealt with without taking a final vote. Is there, Mr. Daudakis?
Yes, I think you were about to ask for questions. If we don't take some sort of a vote, how do the people who don't talk get to register how they feel about one of these issues?
We will take a vote in October. These, these will come back to us.
But shouldn't we take some sort of straw vote here?
No, no.
Voice vote, something?
No.
No?
No. I mean, we have, we have our district meetings. We have our committee meetings. The point of a, of a first reading requirement is for things that have sufficient significance, long-term significance, that we ought to proceed with all due caution. So we try and air out. If people don't have any concerns, well, then apparently, they have no concerns. And, you know, they can then vote to approve when it comes back to us. All right? All right. So is there such a motion to suspend the rules to allow us to deal with these without taking a final vote? All right. It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, to permit us to consider these without, and dispose of them tonight without taking a final vote. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of that motion to suspend the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. So that is how we will proceed. The first item, item number 12, will be-
Point of order?
Yes, Mr. Curtis, please state your point of order.
Three-minute rule still in effect?
Yes, it is. Joan Caldwell, Chairman of the Special Committee.
Mr. Moderator, on behalf of the Special Committee on Structure and Rules of the RTM, I offer the following resolution. Resolved that effective December 31, 2009, the RTM Transportation Committee be dissolved and that its responsibilities be assigned to the Public Works, Land Use, and Town Services Committee, as outlined in the revised Appendix B: Descriptions of Standing Committees, and that the words "Transportation Committee" be deleted from paragraph Roman numeral five, B2 of the Rules of the RTM. It is the same as it appears on the call.
That being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second. May we have the reports of the committees that considered item 12? Doug Wells with the Legislative and Rules report.
Mr. Moderator, our committee took this item up last Monday evening. An historical background is provided to the committee members, referring back to 1996, when an earlier special committee was set up to look at and revise the rules. One of the recommendations coming from the special committee at that time was that, that items should not be referred to too many of our committees, thereby reducing repetitive committee reports and stretching the resources of town officials having to attend multiple committee meetings. One of the recommendations of the earlier special committee was to dissolve the Transportation Committee. However, that was voted down at that time. Reference was made at our meeting to the statistics that are a part of the explanatory comments and were a part of that yellow booklet that most of you received last spring. Those, that statistical analysis confirms that very few matters are referred to the Transportation Committee that are not referred to either Land Use, Town Services, or Public Works. No items have been referred to, during the time period of the analysis, solely to the Transportation Committee. The special committee also took into consideration the fact that it is difficult for some of the smaller districts to provide representation of all the committees. The resolution reassigns the responsibilities of the Transportation Committee, the other town, to the other town committees mentioned above. Our committee understood that it's not the intention to make any final votes until the October meeting at the earliest. We thought it appropriate to take a straw vote to let the RTM know what our committee thought about this item in general terms, and our vote on this matter was nine in favor, three opposed, with District Seven, Eight, and Nine opposed to it.
Thank you. Peter Berg with the report of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening. The Land Use Committee took this item up last Monday. Joan Caldwell presented the item, explained the background, much as you just heard. She said a new committee is, is being recommended to review the capital plan, and that some districts have too few members to cover all committees. Therefore, that supports dissolving the RTM Transportation Committee. Mr. DiMarco, who is Chair of the Transportation Committee and an alternate to the Land Use Committee, indicated his committee was opposed to this action and would be meeting the next day. After additional discussion, Land Use decided not to propose alternative language at this time. We did not take a vote.
Thank you. Mr. Delman with the report of our Town Services Committee.
Good evening. Town Services met on the 15th of September at Town Hall, and all districts were represented. Item 12 was presented by District One's Fred Feldman, who serves on both the Town Services Committee and the Special Committee. We were given a history of the Special Committee, a breakdown of its membership, and a synopsis of its meeting schedule. The Special Committee felt that the Transportation Committee could be deleted without doing harm to the RTM reviews. Budget and operation would be picked up by other committees, of which Town Services is one. This would ease the burden of smaller districts that must double up on meeting assignments to ensure coverage. The Transportation Committee has been assigned very little on calls and has voted to take up more items than it has been assigned. It was agreed that the lack of assigning or call items is the result of the assignment process and not the lack of the committee's unwillingness to meet. The Transportation Committee does have a valued part in reviewing of items. However, is that part important enough to keep it a standing committee? We took a symbolic vote to delete the Transportation Committee, and that vote was seven in favor, four opposed, no abstentions. Voting no were five, six, seven, and nine. District Eight had stepped out momentarily and was not there for the vote.
Thank you. David Melick with the Public Works Committee report.
Last Monday, the Public Works Committee continued to discuss the items assigned and with districts, all districts but one in 10. In attendance, we chose not to vote on this item. However, we did proceed to discuss it. We had talked about what our role, Public Works Committee's role is, as respects the, the item and the suggested language, and the perceived redundancy that the Transportation Committee appears to, to have. We also talked about the struggle that they have with being, having to bring up items on their own that aren't assigned to them. The other discussion was, we had one alternate, who was a member of the Transportation Committee, who discussed the points that I'm sure that the chairman to follow will, will discuss. But we also had Barbara Hinman from the Special Committee in attendance to discuss the points and the logic and, and the fact that it's, that the Transportation Committee doesn't seem to be fully engaged, partly because they're a little bit marginalized, maybe by their charge. However, we looked at the language. No specific recommendations were made. However, District Six, the member from District Six, did actually point out on the Town Services Committee, a recommended language, in the last bullet, where it talks about reviews, traffic control, traffic flow, highways, and parking, and other transportation issues, that that be further defined to add the term "review traffic control," review operational aspects of traffic control. In effect, then, it talks about the operations of the town functions, as opposed to the public works aspects of, of the committee. There are other, a couple other items that were listed in here that I have since noted. Specific asterisk identifying the ex officio representation on the school building committees. So there are some other changes that were made that I think kind of were brought into, into the, the suggested language to codify things and improve our rules. So, again, we took no vote. We did discuss the item. We do expect there may be other amendments that, that could be, could be brought forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Vince DiMarco with the report of our Transportation Committee.
We had Bob Brady from the Special Committee with us. He said he took, that they took the past three years of calls and found that the Transportation Committee, Transportation Committee had very, very little referred to it, only 28 items, indicated also that it was a numbers-driven exercise, a way to free up some people. Mr. Brady confirmed that the items are referred by the town clerk and/or the moderator, and that there was no attempt made to examine the number of non-referred items taken up by the committee and the many important non-call items addressed during the study period. Reaction from the committee members included a belief that subjects' transportation issues should be addressed in their entirety for their long-term effects, as many are complex frequently when they involve transportation because of the interaction with neighboring towns, our state, as well as New York, and the region, and with school districts. A problem with the makeup of the, of the Special Committee, that there was not a representative from every district, or even from each committee. Only one member had substantial prior experience on the Transportation Committee, but was not intimately involved in the Transportation Committee during the period that was examined. A dispute with the conclusion that there was insufficient manpower for all committees, and a belief that this numbers exercise was used to shore up a problem that doesn't exist. Only one district had just enough members to cover all committees, and several districts frequently have delegates and alternates at the meetings of the Transportation Committee. Pretty exciting. Mr. Brady noted that all of the- Mr. Brady noted that all of the Special Committee items on the call were intended to be given a first read this month and voted in October. With that, it was decided that the chairman and secretary would review all of the agendas and reports of the Transportation Committee over the study period and present the statistics for consideration by the full RTM. Our vote was none in favor, nine against. Wouldn't you guess? With Districts 4, 8, and 11 absent. Mr. Moderator, I would like to offer a few comments after hearing from other folks. Please.
Discussion on item 12.
My name is Paul Settlemeyer. I'm a member of the Transportation Committee. In the Explanatory Section, on item 12, the Special Committee proposes to change committee responsibilities that are unrelated to the vote on dissolving the Transportation Committee. If you like these changes but don't want to eliminate the Transportation Committee, you have a conflict on how to vote. Land Use would add the review of all items of the Conservation Committee, add reviews, updates to the POCD, eliminate all matters related to the combination, combination awards, and budget of the combination committee. Public Works adds ex officio representation on school, award, building committees. Town Services adds reviews of the Board of Ethics, Shellfish Commission, eliminates budget responsibilities for Consumer Affairs, Board of Ethics, and Shellfish Commission. Referring to the general guidelines on page nine of the Special Report, I note the following on page nine. Real work of the RTM is done by its committees. I think the Transportation Committee has done a good job of representing the residents of all districts on transportation issues. Also on page nine, the comment, and I quote, "Effectiveness of the RTM rests more on the individual members to be inquisitive and prepared." Please listen to my comments on what members of the Transportation Committee have done and are doing. Page 24 of the Special Report, "The following summaries of standing committee functions provide an outline of each committee's primary function and responsibility, and I add for emphasis but is not intended to limit or restrict any manner of the rights and activities of those committees." Page 28 of the September Explanatory Comments under Land Use adds "Review Planning of All Transportation Initiatives." Planning is not currently one of the charges of the Transportation Committee. See deletions on page 30. I believe planning represents an appropriate expansion of responsibilities. The main justification and the recommendations to eliminate the Transportation Committee is based on limited numbers of items assigned to the Transportation Committee over the period January 05 to January 09. This is a statistical review only. There are numerous occasions when items were incorrectly and not assigned to the Transportation Committee. Example, item number 10 on the current call involves traffic flows, traffic control, and sidewalks, responsibilities of the Transportation Committee. Item was not referred to the Transportation Committee. Not sure that the only benchmarks for evaluating the value of a committee should be the raw items referred to it. I believe there is support in the town for a Transportation Committee focused on transportation, and believe the focus will be diluted if responsibility is added to the other RTM committees. With a focus on transportation, I believe Transportation Committee was a key party in blocking the first selectmen's initiatives to take the policemen off Greenwich Avenue. Transportation Committee would-
Thirty seconds.
Critic. We took a strong stance against the parking garage at the corner of Lewis and Benedict. The working with the Fleet Department, the Transportation Committee, was an early catalyst in developing proposed standards for hybrid vehicles to town fleet. These standards were presented to the BET with a recommendation that hybrid vehicles be added to the fleet with additional information on state funds. The RTM committee members have, on the Transportation Committee, committed time and effort to the Selectmen's Parking and Traffic Committee, the Selectmen's Transportation Committee, the Downtown Consensus Committee, and Regional Transportation Committees.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to note that the POCD Transportation Committee has a limited life, and the prior one was unilaterally dissolved by the previous first selectman. Thank you.
Mr. DiMarco, anything you'd like to add to your report?
I just thought it would be appropriate for me to say how I feel about it. In my view, there may be a time someday when the RTM Transportation Committee wouldn't be important, or that we could fracture the responsibilities of the committee and not have a focused committee like we have right now. But I think item 10 was probably a good example of where another committee in the RTM, and I don't even believe the DPW was taking a look, a real close look, at what the issues were along the intersection, along Holly Hill and the Post Road regarding the hole in the ground. So, I think that it's still important to have a focused committee, the first selectmen's committee, and maybe that's one thing that we can talk about over the next month before we make a decision on this. David Melick mentioned that he expects there's going to be some amendments. We have some other suggestions on how the charge to the Transportation Committee could actually be expanded to be even more useful. One of the things we might consider is that this committee would help the Selectmen's Committee get off the ground, make suggestions on how they can be more effective, but I certainly don't think that this committee should go away until at least another term. As Paul Settlemeyer mentioned, the Selectmen's Committee could always be abolished again by the next first selectmen. So, where's the continuity? At some point in time, the town could take a real stand and hire a transportation planner like it ought to, and create a more, a better focus on transportation issues. Maybe at that time, the RTM committee could be fractured into responsibilities in the other committees, but for now, I would urge you not to let it go. Thanks.
Randall Huffman, District 7.
Good evening. As you start tinkering with some of the basic structures that we've had, I think we should step back and consider that maybe what we're talking about is the perception we have of the responsibility of these committees. Several of them have specific responsibility areas that are pretty well-defined, and they receive items recommended to them, directed to them on a regular basis on the calls. But there are other committees that really take a different look and are not just in a passive reactive mode. One of those that I've spent a lot of time on, of course, is the Budget Overview Committee. Others that have had this kind of responsibility has been Legislative and Rules, for example, and others. But I can think of no committee that has a more important responsibility for looking into issues that are of considerable import to all of us than the Transportation Committee. And I would urge that, as you think over this next month as to whether to abolish this committee, or perhaps to think of a way it might be structured, for example, not requiring that every district have a representative on it if they choose not to, but think about, as you spend this next month, sitting in traffic somewhere in town, or watching a child try to rush across a street, or situations in which it's clear that a dangerous situation has been allowed to develop and remain, that what we really should have is an active transportation committee working with town officials to address some of the most important concerns and issues that we have in this town on an ongoing basis. I can't think of a time that I haven't heard people making comments that, as they've looked over the changes in this town in the last, call it five, call it 10, call it 15 years, one of the things that's most troubled them has been traffic and transportation, and we really haven't addressed it very carefully. I would urge that we try to maintain this committee, think about it, and try to do exactly that. Thank you.
Tom Cornelius, who, incidentally, is the new Chair of District 3.
I would just like to say that the first three speakers spoke of the smaller districts that can't handle going to the meetings, and since our district is the smallest, I thought it appropriate for me to say that we have no trouble getting to the meetings if we have to double up. Our delegate didn't miss one meeting all year, and that should not be used as an excuse to get rid of the Transportation Committee. Thank you.
Dr. Carlson, District 1. Any additional speakers are welcome to come forward so that we don't wait for the walk.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I look at the Transportation Committee as one of what I would call the smaller committees, the one of the somewhat lesser committees in the RTM. But nevertheless, it has an important function. There are problems dealing with transportation, and the existence of the committee allows a forum where these problems may be addressed, especially by the general public. I served for many years on the old Health Committee, which was merged with another committee, and I see the eyes of a fellow member of that committee, who I think can remember one night that many people came in from the Harbor area complaining about a great stink. I didn't know what to make of it because we had a town official in there who said there was no stink. Yes, there was. A public forum is very valuable. It may be contrary to the people who lead this town to have a forum like that where a town official makes an inappropriate or actually false statement, but they're very useful to have these small committees, and therefore I ask you to reconsider any ideas that you might have of disposing of the Transportation Committee. It's also a removal of the Transportation Committee would be reducing the structure of the RTM, and some of the structure is in the committees by a few iotas, perhaps, and that'd be a loss for the RTM and for the people of this town. Thank you.
Betsy Fruman, Chair of District 9.
I'm not speaking for my district. I'm just speaking for me. To me, one of the major problems in Greenwich is transportation, and to cut it up, to dice it up, and distribute it to other committees loses the focus on transportation. Until we get to a point where we have better transportation in town, we have bike lanes, we have a transportation czar, I think we, as the RTM, have to maintain that focus on transportation. That's my first point. My second point has to do with where is the problem? If the problem lies in the fact that there are too many committees, then what the whole proposal is to get rid of transportation and create another committee. There's no logic to that, as far as I'm concerned, and I thank Mr. Cornelius for getting up and explaining that if the problem that we're trying to solve is that District 3 can't get to the meetings, he's saying that's not a problem. It's not worth getting rid of transportation.
Further discussion on item 12. All right, item 13 comes before us. Bob Brady with that resolution.
Good evening again. Item 13 is a resolution to create a Capital Projects Review Committee. It is as it appears on the call.
All right, we're not voting finally on this, so why don't we just get our committee Doug Wells with the Legislative and Rules Report.
We took this meeting up last Monday evening. There were no particular objections to the merits of this resolution. Mary Ferry pointed out that the paragraph concerning election of officers has no language concerning the procedure by which the initial meeting is to call to order, so it may be that we'll add some language there to satisfy Mary's concerns. Our straw vote on this item was 11-0-1, with District 1 abstaining.
Thank you. Pamela Frederick with the Finance Committee Report.
Mr. Moderator, this item was presented to the committee by Bob Tuthill. He noted that the objective was to form a Capital Projects Review Committee consisting of seven members with strong technical skills. There were a number of concerns raised by the Finance Committee, and I'll just summarize those. The first was a concern with the lack of focus, with a preference noted to limit their review to key large items rather than the entire CIP. There was a concern that there is overlap with other RTM committees, indication of a preference for consideration of other major operating items, particularly where a new or expanded facility impacts the budget. Concerned that not all districts will be represented, as the recommendation of the Special Committee is to limit it to seven members. And unlike labor contracts where there are common interests, the CIP has district-specific impact. There was concern that the language specifies that the committee would identify projects to eliminate or to add to the CIP. Concerned that the meeting schedule is still too little, too late, and does not address having the RTM informed or involved in the process earlier. There's a general concern that there was a lack of coordination and input from the BET and Selectmen that would, and who would be key to work as partners to make this committee effective, and that there was a preference not to address the one-off recommendations from the Special Committee, that everything in their report should be addressed in totality. We did not take a vote on the item as it was indicated, that this was only for review. However, the committee felt that there were a number of outstanding issues that were not fully addressed, and would recommend that the item be referred back to Special Committee before bringing it back to the RTM for a vote.
Thank you. Michael Petraselli with the Budget Overview Committee Report.
Good evening. The Budget Overview Committee met on September 10. We did discuss the item. We did not vote, as we had just received the call that day, so we didn't have sufficient time to study it. We will take it up in October and expect to come back with recommendations and other possible solutions then. Thank you.
And do we have an Appointments Committee report on this? Discussion on, Mr. Von Keisling, do you have a report on item 13?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Appointments Committee had a special meeting last Tuesday on this. We focused mainly on the item 2, which is the composition of that committee, which says that there shall be seven members nominated by the Appointments Committee and approved by the RTM. In the discussion, we had, of course, we ranged a little further about the whole committee construction and the purpose of it, but our vote was specifically on that item. On the item as proposed, the vote was 3-7-0, three in favor, seven against. Then there was an amendment proposed, which was basically to change the wording, saying that the, something to the effect, and bear with me because I'm running, this is for memory, that the CPRC shall consist of an alternate and regular member from each district. It shall be a standing committee and consist of a regular and alternate member of each district, which, that was passed 7-4, three against, no abstentions. The basic gist of this was to make it the same as a normal RTM standing committee with representation from each district.
Okay. Discussion on item 13. The last vote was 7-3, not 7-4? Okay, thank you. Discussion on item 13. Mr. Petraselli.
Good evening again. I recognize it's late, just a couple of things. These are my opinions, not that of the committee. I'm opposed to another committee- I'm opposed to another committee. We just need to do a better job with our processes. Look at the meeting now. It's ten fifty, and half the people are gone. We need to do a better job doing our job. We don't need more committees. We don't need more rules. I recognize that capital spending is very important, but it represents just six percent of our town budget. We don't need another committee to study that. We have committees that can do that. We spend ninety-four percent of our budget operating the town. Why don't we make an operating committee? Why not, right? It seems kind of silly and repetitive. Capital spending can be confusing, and if you want to inform more information, look at this one page in the budget schedule. It took a while to get to it. There were meetings. The town has a capital committee. We have a, a member from the R T M that's a non-voting member of that committee. That person is supposed to report back to us. We already have a process in place. We need to follow the process. But if you want to see what we're spending the money on, it's one page. It's here, right? There's forty-two items. They've been voted on by the selectmen, by the heads of some departments. This is the simplest document of all in our budget schedules that we need to read. We don't need another committee to do this. If you feel strongly we do need a committee, if you feel strongly we do need a committee, then we either need all districts represented, or as Mr. Van Keisling said, some adjustment to the seven members. Maybe something that simply, you can't have more than two members from one, from more than one district. So, I'll be against it now, I'll be against it in October. We need to do a better job managing how we manage this, this body. We need better leaders, more leadership, better attendance. We need to look inside. And you need to look at your neighbors that aren't here and say, why did you leave? And you need to come here and be energized. So forget the committees, let's just do a better job and get to work. All right? Thank you.
Further discussion on item thirteen. Mr. Boutell.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, I guess I'm going to ask a question that deals with item thirteen and the others, in light of one of the committee reports that was just given, the suggestion of referring the item back to this Special Committee. My question to you, Mr. Moderator, given that the two reading procedures should hopefully make things move more smoothly when it comes back to us for a second time. My question is this: Having talked to the chairman, who is unsure, does the Special Committee continue to exist in the first place to have items referred back to it?
Yeah, it has, the Special Committee, as far as I'm concerned, is in effect until its proposals are voted on.
Okay. I just want to make sure the chairman of that committee heard that.
Okay. Further discussion on item thirteen. Mr. Brady, District Five.
Good evening. Speaking in part for myself, but also as a member of the Special Committee. Over the past five years, the capital budget has become one of the largest of our spending components, if we work to integrate and accommodate the need for new facilities, repair or replace worn-out facilities, and properly maintain those that we have. At twenty million dollars, this year's general fund capital budget is relatively small. But this is achieved by pushing tens of millions of dollars into the future and removing the Nathaniel Witherell project from it entirely. The town also began to borrow money during this five-year, during this period for capital projects, calling greater attention to its actions. A fifteen-year general fund capital requirement is projected at nearly half a billion dollars. No single R T M group is charged with examining, reporting to, and advising the R T M concerning the overall capital budget. Individual committees take up current year appropriations. The Finance Committee takes up the current proposed borrowing requirement. The B O C may discuss the interplay of long-term borrowing and the tax levy. Only building committees report on the project of previously appropriated projects. At the June two thousand and six Moderators Committee meeting, it considered a proposal to review and report to the R T M on capital projects in a more holistic manner. It considered several ways to do this, including establishing a new committee or assigning the task to an existing committee. It decided to assign the task to the B O C. For a variety of reasons outside the control of the B O C, the R T M never received the desired reports. The effort was not pursued for fiscal oh nine or the fiscal ten budgets. The Special Committee believes it is important that the R T M organize itself to consider the capital budget as a whole. It considered the information to be developed and reported, the timing of the reports, and what groups should be assigned responsibility to perform the work. Its recommendations are embodied in the proposed resolution. The Special Committee concluded that it is, it was better, is better, to assign the responsibility to a single committee rather than to distribute the pieces among various committees. It considered assigning the work to the B O C or the Finance Committee. In the case of the B O C, it appeared to the Special Committee, contrary to the B O C's general charter, to assign it a particular piece of work which it would have to perform year after year. Finance indicated it didn't have the sufficient resources to take this on in addition to its existing assignments. Having reached a conclusion that a separate committee is needed, the Special Committee considered how to staff it. It considers staffing it with a member and alternate from each district, and various sizes of specialist committees, ultimately deciding to recommend a committee with seven specialists nominated by the Appointments Committee and appointed by the R T M as a whole. This proposed structure may, of course, be amended. In the reports I've heard, there's been some confusion as to the committee's purpose. The proposed committee is to report to the R T M. It receives the First Selectmen's capital budget and financing plan for which he is responsible under the charter. The committee is not preparing, not changing, not updating, or otherwise acting as a proponent of particular petitions with regard to the capital budget. It is to review it and report to the R T M its findings, conclusions, and recommendations with regard to the budget. It is possible that the committee may put sense of the meeting resolutions before the R T M, asking it to express its opinion on capital budget issues. Committee charges little i, lowercase i, and lowercase l relating to items which should be eliminated and added respectively-
Thirty seconds.
-have caused some concern. The intent of these items is for the committee to use its judgment and make recommendations to the R T M as to items to be removed or added. As far as current year's appropriations concerned, the R T M may generally reduce or remove items from the budget. Items to be added are, of course, only advisory, since the R T M may not increase a budget line. However, if a project that the committee believes to be important is omitted, it should certainly, it is certainly appropriate for the committee to call the R T M's attention to the omission. The R T M is, of course, the town. In short, the history of this goes back several years. The capital budget is large and complex. The Special Committee recommends that the R T M create a separate committee to review and report on the capital budget, and that that committee be composed of seven specialists. The Special Committee vote was ten zero zero, with one member absent on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Item fourteen now comes before us. Despina Fausiliotis.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Pruner, what is your point of order, which is a statement that there is a violation of our rules currently in effect?
In that case, I'd like to, like to modify it. It's now eleven o'clock. We're leaving members regularly, and I would like to move that we postpone further hearing of the remaining eight items. It'll be an October meeting.
All right. That motion to postpone the remaining items to our October meeting is in order. Is there a second?
Yes, a second.
Mr. Von Keisling.
Point of information, I'm a little confused on the procedure of this. Since it's a second reading situation, if we postpone those items to those October, does that mean they cannot be voted on until December?
Not in my view. This is the first reading. We could vote on any of them in October. If we choose not to take advantage of it, we've had that opportunity. And I will say this, you know that one of these proposals is in fact a second reading requirement, and one of the purposes of going through this exercise tonight was to see the practical issues that such a provision raises, and hopefully we will give some thought before enacting a second reading requirement, how, you know, the devil's in the detail, so to speak, and we've had some experience on that tonight. So, we'll take a vote on this motion to postpone and see where that leaves us. All right, that is debatable. Any discussion on the motion to postpone these remaining items to our October meeting?
Last year.
All right, if you are in favor of putting everything off that remains until October, you should vote yes. If you want to consider, continue going through these, you should vote no.
Point of information, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Boutell.
We're postponing the remaining items, so they have to come back exactly as they appear on the call. Prior items can therefore be modified and ceded. Remaining items therefore must, they're the only ones that have to come back, correct?
That is correct. All those in favor of postponing the remaining items to our October meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has carried. That brings us to the end of our agenda. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a very safe trip home.